Welcome to Marcus City Commission Agenda Monday, February 11th, 2013, 7:00 PM. Would you please join us in a pledge allegiance to the flag?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kimbensey.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Neme.
Here.
And Mayor DePietro.
Here. Show all seven Commissioners present. Note of agenda changes, Commissioners. Commissioner Snyder.
If I have support, I would like to add a small discussion item to the agenda, which is, I've had a number of citizens ask me about pedestrian safety, so discussion about pedestrian safety in crosswalks.
Is there a second? Commissioner Coyne, thank you. So anyways, there's a motion and second by Commissioner Coyne, and that'll be, pardon?
Motion, second.
Yes, by Commissioner Coyne. Also, this will be added as number 12, and we'll put it under pedestrian. As we get to that item, we can rephrase it. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
Move the agenda be approved as amended.
Second? Commissioner Snyder? There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Snyder. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Close.
Motion passes, seven to zero. I just got a couple announcements here. Board of Review, one opening. Harbor Advisory Committee, one vacancy. Housing Commission, one vacancy as of 2/12/13. Local Officers Compensation, Commission, three openings. Planning Commission, one vacancy as of 3/19/13. Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan, Ad-Hoc Committee, one alternate opening. Sister City Advisory Committee, two openings. Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Rep., that's one vacancy. Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, one vacancy. With that, we'll move to a public hearing. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. We're holding a public hearing on Ordinance Number 599, an ordinance to rename the portion of Lake Shore Boulevard North and West of Peter White Drive as Island Beach Road. Background, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on December 4th, 2012, to consider a request to rename Lake Shore Boulevard North and West of Peter White Drive to Island Beach Road. After conducting a public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously passed the following motion. It was moved by Jay Gutter, seconded by E. Roberts, and carried eight to zero to recommend to the City Commission approval of the request to rename Lake Shore Boulevard to Island Beach Road for the following reasons. One, Lake Shore Boulevard is a very long road, and the section being requested for renaming is a hard turnoff from Lake Shore Boulevard, which makes it seem like a whole distinct portion of the road. Two, the road was previously named Island Beach Road. And three, the change will address safety concerns due to confusion of emergency vehicles. In accordance with the city code, the renaming of a street is done by ordinance, therefore a public hearing is required. Please see attached for complete background materials and excerpt of Planning Commission meeting minutes. Fiscal effect none, recommendation. Conduct a public hearing on Ordinance Number 599 and review the Planning Commission's recommendation, alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Before I turn us over to public comment, I want to let the Commissioners know that they have their packets in front of them for Ordinance Number 599. So with that, I'll open this up for public comment on Island Beach Road. Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time, please step up to the, over here, John. You can use that one there. Present your name and physical address, please.
My name is John Prince, and I live at 323 Lake Shore Boulevard, Lake Shore Boulevard in Marquette. Been a resident of Island Beach, Lake Shore Boulevard for almost 50 years, and, you know, thank you for considering this opportunity. This is not something that is...
Whoop, okay. This is not something that we just decided to try to do in the last couple of years. It's been on the, you know, the thoughts of a lot of neighbors for probably 30 years. I think a few times in the past, we've attempted to approach this. The opportunity never was just right, or a few times in the past, we didn't have enough positive members coming in, I mean, neighbors coming in to speak and for it, whereas there were a couple of neighbors that spoke against it, therefore it got shot down. But as the City Clerk mentioned, you know, there are several reasons we want to do this. We also went through the process, or I went through the process of, you know, soliciting, you know, the comments from our neighbors. Not 100%, but over 75% to 80% of the neighbors are in favor of doing this, changing the name to Island Beach Road. You know, if you talk to some of the, you know, the natives of Marquette, you know, when you speak of Lake Shore Boulevard, they don't know if you're talking about down by the Hampton Inn, or the Coast Guard Station, Picnic Rocks, Lakeview Arena, Holly Street, or the Presque Isle. They know when you say Island Beach Road, it's that segment of road there that runs east and west. You know, years ago, the road used to type curve, you know, into Lake Shore, into our street naturally. Through the years, a reconfiguration of the road, the road now really goes straight into Peter White Drive, which is the island. Our road is a separate road. It really is not, it's connected, but it's not part of the same Lake Shore Boulevard path as it follows the lake. As, as mentioned before, we've had neighbors, we've had relatives, we've had different people trying to find us out there, and they get confused. You know, they try to, they don't know where Lake Shore really starts. Is it Lake Street? Is it, you know, the middle of town? Is it way up north? You know, people just don't quite understand, but when they refer to it as Island Beach Road, it's clear, it's concise, and it's what, what a lot of people know it to be. And with that, I did have, I do have a petition here, just a name listing of the neighbors that were interested, and again, we have approximately 42 homeowners on our street. We have 30-plus names on that list that were in favor of it. Wasn't able to get ahold of a few neighbors, there were a couple that preferred not to change it. So, thank you for your consideration on this matter.
Thank you, sir. Probably if we have any questions, John, would you be able to address it if it comes to that? Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time about Island Beach Road? Please state your name and physical address, please.
My name is Tom Craig, and I live at 3050 Lake Shore Boulevard. Actually, my house is just west of the corner of Lake Shore Boulevard and Lake Shore Boulevard. Because that's what the sign down at the end of the street says. So I don't want anybody here confused as to where I live, okay? My, my parents built out there, one of the first homes that are homes and not camps, down on Island Beach Road. And I remember my dad, Earl, I don't know if any of you guys remember, and we used to have Craig's News, and he started out trying to get the name changed back to the way it used to be. And so now it's my turn to continue the request, to have it done. And, you know, it's more from a standpoint of saying an emergency vehicle trying to go to the corner of Lake Shore Boulevard and Lake Shore Boulevard, and trying to figure out, where do I go next? Now that concerns me, and one of the reasons were, even though I'm 68, there's a lot of people, my next door neighbor's 91, okay, who require emergency vehicle service every now and then. And you can dismiss all of this noise that you hear about the mapping software, name changes, too confusing and too hard to do. That's not what we're worried about. We're worried about somebody going to the corner of Lake Shore Boulevard and Lake Shore Boulevard and finding out which way do I go when they're driving a vehicle with a spinning light on the top of it. So I would like to encourage you guys to seriously consider changing the name, so there's much less confusion, and I only think it's logical, from a standpoint of safety, to do it. All the other concerns are rather trivial. And we want to thank you, by the way, for our new sewer, and our new street, and our new underground utilities. It's fabulous. Just in case you guys don't get thanked, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time?
Good evening. You're in Malanquin, Eight Market Drive. 27, 28 years ago, I used to live on so-called Island Beach Road for a little bit while I was building my home on Eight Market Drive. And at that time, people were looking to change the name, or at least call it Island Beach Road, because a lot of people knew it by that name. And for some reason, it did not take at the time, and so now when there's a new opportunity, I would encourage this Commission to name it to Island Beach, what it used to be way back when. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the City Commission at this time? Please state your name and physical address, please.
Amy Conover, 419 North Fourth Street. I am also the manager of the Studio Gallery located at 2905 Lake Shore Boulevard. It is right there at that intersection. I just wanted to say that even being aware of the business ramifications of an address change, I'm fully in support of proceeding with changing the name of that road, because it is even confusing as a business. When you say, oh, we're on Lake Shore Boulevard, people have no idea where that is. I think it would be a benefit to the businesses in that area as well, to have a distinction for the, a separate name for the road.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the City Commission at this time? Please state your name and physical address, please.
David Alley, 3027 Lake Shore Boulevard, hopefully Island Beach Road. I've lived out there for quite a while. I've lived in Marquette for quite a while, and I listen to quite a few police officers and firemen, and I hear them refer to our street as Island Beach Road when they can't get somebody to understand where Lake Shore Boulevard is out there. And I think for safety concerns, when you turn a hard right off of a road or left, usually the name is different. And it is Island Beach Road. Most of us call it that, and I'd like to see it come back to that. And it's been changed quite a bit out there recently, and I would just like to say thanks a lot to John Prince for pushing a lot of this. And just so everybody understands, we, the property owners, paid for our underground utilities. I'm talking about the phone, the cable, and the electrical, that was not included in what we were paid for, or the city paid for. But again, I'd like to thank John Prince for really pushing this, because it's made our neighborhood real nice, and the icing on the cake would be a sign at the end that said Island Beach Road. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll turn this, I'll close this portion of the public hearing and turn it over to my fellow Commissioners. Fellow Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve amending Ordinance Number 599 to change the designated area of, to Island Beach Road, from Lake Shore Boulevard to Island Beach Road as recommended, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Kimbensey? Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
I can't miss this opportunity. You know, street naming is kind of fun in Marquette. I thought about doing a comedy routine one time. You know, there is no first street in Marquette, and if you don't have a first street, can you really have a second street? Or is second street really first street? You know, in fact, it's pretty hard to find second street. You have to really go looking for it, so. But, but seriously, in this case, I, I think, you know, for someone to get their address changed without leaving, leaving their house is a real pain in the butt. But if 75% of the people would like to see that happen, I'm all for it. You know, there's, there's a lot of work that goes along with that, but because of that, I, I think that people are really committed to this. They see the benefit, they've, they've listed the reasons, and there are a number of them, and certainly the, the availability of, of emergency vehicles, finding the right addresses is high on that list, so I, I think this is something we can support.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Kimbensey, anything further?
I'd just like to add that any time you can come forward with the majority saying that you want this change, it's, it's hard for the seven of us to stand up here and say, your neighborhood should have this, we should change the name, but when 75% of you want this, and you have a petition showing us that this is what you want for where you live, it's real easy to go along with it. So I'd like to thank the neighborhood for organizing, coming up with a petition, being well-prepared, and, and wanting this change to come forward, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Kimbensey. Any other Commissioner wishing to address this issue at this time? Seeing none, my comment is that this goes back to 1892, this road does, so it, it was Island Beach Road forever, and so many people, even after change to Lake Shore Boulevard, which I have no idea what the reason was to have Lake Shore Boulevard at the intersection of Lake Shore Boulevard, because tourists, they get confused enough when everything is in order and traveling around, so it is a safety and health issue, and also for delivery, trucks and everybody else, so excellent idea. I thank everybody that participated in this and supported the change in of Island Beach Road. And with that, last question, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Close. Motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
We need a roll call on the ordinance.
Okay. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kimbensey.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyne.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Neme.
Yes.
And Mayor DePietro.
Yes. With that, we'll move to the presentation. Board of Zoning Appeals, by Chairman Charles Crotty. Crotty? Yeah. Okay, just mixing it up a little bit, make sure I'm right. Thank you, Charles.
As the head of the Board of Zoning Appeals, Andrea? Okay, it's coming up. This is, as far as background goes, this is where we certain, currently stand, and we have three, four, four positions this year that are being replaced. Three of them have been reappointed, and we are waiting for our one appointment from the planning board to join our, our group. In 2012, we had 11 meetings. We had one canceled because there were no applicants. We had three, three meetings where 11, or there were three meetings, or 11 excused absences in 2012. However, our alternates, the two of them, have been very gracious to attend. We did have four meetings where we had less than seven members present. The purpose and the goals of, of the Board of Zoning Appeals is we were established by the Section 80.64 of the City Zoning Ordinance that established the BZA, and this goes along with the Public Act 2006 PA 110. The responsibilities of the Board of Zoning Appeals is we officially interpret the zoning ordinance text and maps. We hear appeals of, from administrative orders, requirements, decisions, and determinations, variances from city, from the city zoning ordinance standards, and designate Class A non-conforming use structures. In 2012, we had 25 variances that we heard in the 11 meetings, and there were two Class A non-conforming designations. We had no appeals of administrative decisions, and we, and no administrative reviews or interpretations of the zoning ordinance. Our upcoming goals, develop more of an outreach tools, such as zoning department webpage in conjunction with the land development code to inform the public, and to decrease the number of variance requests and structures that come under construction or have already been built. The issues that we have in discussion, we would like to be allowed to present members, to have the members present recommendations on prospective applicants for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We recommend that the penalty fees be raised by 25% to deter future non-compliance with the ordinance. We recommend that a development of a plan for efforts to support public awareness and education of the zoning ordinance, and we recommend a fine structure for licensed and unlicensed contractors who violate the ordinance. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, Chuck would like to have some questions fired at him. Commissioners, Commissioner and Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Crotty, your last point where you say fines for licensed, unlicensed, is that just meaning you would fine each type of contractor equally? Or would you have separate for licensed and separate for unlicensed?
We aren't allowed to, all we can do is recommend that a system be set. We can't set the zoning...
Well, in your proposal, are you...
...the proposal.
It would be equally whether you're licensed or unlicensed?
Yes. Whether it's licensed or unlicensed.
That's for, for ones who have, who've gone ahead...
It's what violates...
...and built a ramp for some, some resident, then they have to come into your board and request a variance.
Right. Or they, or they've built another structure that's in the setbacks without getting a Any other questions?
Any other? Commissioner Ryan?
I forget exactly how it was worded, but you wanted to reduce the number of variances in already built properties?
Hopefully, with the new land use structure ordinance that's being proposed, that will eliminate some of the variance requests that we have.
So that will take care of itself. It's not something you have to do to...
Right. There's nothing that we have to do on that, but by the same token, by educating the public of what their responsibilities are as far as the zoning ordinance goes, we hope that that also reduces.
Do you encounter many situations where the, where the problem arose because people were not aware of the ordinance? Is that typically a problem?
Yes. That's a, I'd say 70% of the people who come in who have built, and then find out because they're being fined for building in a restricted, in a setback or something, or the, building a ramp into the city right-of-way, that, when they come in to us, they had no idea.
Any thoughts on what we should be doing to better educate the public?
We, we did talk about a website for the zoning board, Andreas, and to produce an educational program. I don't know if you have to do it through the contractors or some other fashion through the city's website.
Because this can be a tough problem for some people.
Yes, it can be.
I mean, they, they honestly don't know they're breaking the law in some cases, and...
Right.
...wind up paying a penalty and perhaps other costs as well.
That's right. The, if they're hiring a contractor, licensed or unlicensed, that contractor better know. And this is why we want to, we want a, a structure where the, that contractor can be fined for operating in the city of Marquette and not obeying the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Coyne?
The fines, both for the individual and contractors, does the board have a plan to formally vote on that and make a recommendation to us?
No.
I think...
We don't. We just, all we can do is recommend that a fine system be set up. We have no control, and being in a appellate body, we shouldn't, we shouldn't recommend the amounts at all.
Well, I think you could recommend that you'd need a, you're recommending a change, and during budget session is when those fines are determined, and that's coming up. So I think, other than just you telling us, I think it wouldn't be unreasonable for the board to write us a letter saying we think that should...
We can do that.
You should change the fines and your rationales, and I recognize that it's our job to do that, but it's your job to let us know what you need to be more effective.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner? Commissioner Kimbensey?
I just want to add, I do agree with Commissioner Coyne, that's a great way to go about the process. I had the pleasure of serving as the zoning code official for three months with the city, and I can tell you that an education tool is absolutely necessary, because zoning does affect just about everyone in the city. And no one likes to be told what to do with their property, but I think if there was an education tool, whether it's the realtors, whether it's the banks, something little where they can say, look on the city's website as you're buying a new home, here's your checklist. I think it's valuable. And also, working with my father, who was a land surveying assistant, we often had to go and clean up a lot of messes, and, and certainly have brought a lot of people towards the Board of Zoning Appeals. However, variances are a huge part of the, the zoning and planning, I believe, the, the revenue that comes in. I'm not sure what the numbers are. Are you suggesting that the fees charged for the contractors or homeowners that were in violation would replace some of those as we go through and we update the land development code, or is this just something you're seeing as...
This is something that we're seeing as a, basically a punitive action upon the contractors, licensed and unlicensed, who come in and continually violate the city zoning ordinance. There are, because of the structure of the county of Marquette, we have different zoning ordinances in major, major areas, Nagone, Ishving, Guin, and they're all different, and the, some of these contractors just say, I can do it there, I'm going to do it here.
And that's, that's one thing I noticed in that job, is that the city of Marquette does have a higher level of holding people accountable to zoning and the ordinances we have, and some people might not certainly be used to that, so. Again, I, I appreciate the presentation, and look forward to what you can pull together for us.
Any other Commissioner at this time wishing to discuss this presentation? Any other commissioner at this time wishing to discuss this presentation? Seeing none, I want to thank you very much for excellent presentation, and go ahead and do that during the budget session.
Thank you. We will take care of that. I do ask to be excused, I have another meeting I have to be at.
Right, you're excused.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to number three, presentation by Lakes Superior Community Partnership by Executive Director Amy Kleckner.
One, I always hopes the technology works when you actually get to the lectern. I'm Amy Kleckner, I'm the CEO of the Lakes Superior Community Partnership. I also want to introduce, Tom Mogish is with me, he's one of the officers of our Board of Directors, and also our Director of Business Development, Carol Lee Swanberg is here today too, in case you have any questions for her as well.
Amy, did you want them up there with you at all?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good. Okay. It's not coming up. Oh, it's in us below? Yeah. Okay. This one's yours or this one's yours? Nope, of course. Is that it? That's it, all right. Okay. All right, now the little mouse is gone. All right, I'm going to do it this way then. I'm going to go through the slides rather quickly in hopes that we have a little time for questions. I am aware that you have a very long agenda tonight, so what I do want to go through is similar to what we just presented at our Board of Directors meeting last week. And just to remind you, a little bit of, you know, who we are, some of the things we're doing, and what direction we're headed, how we're going to get there, and some of the things we've accomplished over the last year, which is basically our annual report for 2012. We did provide you with that, which will have much more detail, so I'll kind of just do an overview tonight. Just a reminder that in the last 12 to 18 months, we've really went through a lot of restructure, reorganization, refocus and rebranding. This is our mission statement that was adopted a little over a year ago, really shortened, narrowed our focus to work on economic development 100%. This is our structure, which we have been working to reorganize as well, and our investors, of course, are at the top, and that's what we may have referred to before as members. They, of course, drive the organization from a resource perspective and an input perspective. We've made some changes on the volunteer side, so you'll see our Board of Directors and officers. We eliminated our executive committee to eliminate a step in the process of approvals, and really wanted to reengage our board, which is quite large still. We have been working to shrink that somewhat based on attrition, and we will have our first real meeting with this new structure on Wednesday, so hoping to see us be able to really reengage the Board of Directors, which has been difficult as a large group. Of course, everybody needs an organizational chart, and this is the one we use externally. And what this reminds the staff is that everything we do is client-focused. All these bubbles, as we call them around, talk about the different services that we provide, and one of the unique things with the way the staff has been trained and cross-trained is if you ask them which bubble they performed in, they will tell you, "I perform in all of them. I play a role in all of them. I may be a support, I may be a lead," but it's all client-based. Of course, you need the formal structure, and this is the folks that we have at the LSCP right now, and we use this chart, of course, because you still have to do your day-to-day type of operations evaluations, knowing and understanding who reports to Our strategic plan that was approved in early 2012 is technically was a three-year plan, but it's a living, breathing document. One of the things that we had been disappointed in working on our last strategic plans is that you have them, they get out of date, you put them on a shelf, you work with them, but this is something that we actually brought in a consultant, Mark Duff from Freestone Road, who has also done some similar organizations to ours in strategic planning. And the way our strategic plan now works is every six months, we review, we remove the tactics and the strategies that are completed, and then we add another six months to the end of that. So we're always making adjustments that are necessary to meet our goals. And it doesn't just address what we're going to do, it also reminds us how we will act and what resources we will use to get there. I'm just going to quickly run over our seven strategic priorities, and of course, you know, first and foremost is our efforts in economic development. And then the next two talk about networking and resources. What we've found in economic development and in most sectors is that relationship building is critical to outcomes. And so one of the things that we've really honed in on is how we build what we call a purposeful built network. So retaining and growing relationships that need to be institutionalized, just not individual staff people driving those, but also having basically a hit list of folks that we need to build stronger relationships with, broader relationships with. And I'll give you an example, how we see the outcomes to this networking. Friday, we had the Baker Strategy Group here that gave an update on the 2013 Michigan outlook, Economic Outlook Survey. And how we got involved in that was actually had a phone call out of the blue from David Baker, and a business colleague that we both knew had hooked us up when he was looking for someone in the Upper Peninsula and organization to work with to include the Upper Peninsula results and to really find out what the temperature of business in the Upper Peninsula is to the survey. They typically only done in the metro areas in lower peninsula. So I was able then to meet him at a public policy conference, and we were able to work a deal out, which was a great deal for us. He did all the work, all we needed to provide them was the network that we have in the Upper Peninsula for surveying, and in return, he came up, it was his first time to Marquette last Friday, and he was just enamored with the community and everything he saw. We also did have higher and more positive feedback and comments from our regions in the Upper Peninsula versus a lot of the regions in the lower peninsula, which I guess for those of us that live here, we weren't surprised. Value is something we have to show our members, our investors, every day, so we've worked very hard to really craft value-added type packages for investors versus a strict dues-chamber membership type that we had done in the past. We want investors to be able to choose what makes sense to them and to invest in economic development their way. Becoming a model financial performer is basically the foundation of any organization. If we don't have the resources, staff, which is the next one, number six, and finances, we can't carry out our mission. We continue to be 75% funded privately and 25% publicly, it was probably 77, 23 last year, but in the 15 years that we've been doing this, we've never dropped below 75% privately funded. We do believe that economic development is everybody's responsibility, and we are looking forward to approaching the commission again at some point to talk about that. Last, but certainly not least, is our client services. So the things that we are able to do, whether it's entrepreneurship, startups, retention, networking, any of those things that provide value and help a business be successful, is on our list. How do we get there? I've been very fortunate with a Board of Directors that has provided us the opportunities to get the credentials and the professional development we need to be able to do our job. This is a list of some of those. Probably the most recent is, at the end of last year, the International Economic Development Council presented awards, and we received the 2012 Silver Medal as a high-performing economic development organization for the population category 50,000 to 100,000. We provide a variety of services, and this is a snapshot of 2012. We served 265 clients, which is about 10% higher number of clients than in 2011. These are general categories of what the support they were looking for. Obviously, the numbers don't add up to 265, and that's because typically when you're working with a client, they need more than one service at a time. When we talk about being, working on our network and being connected to be able to further our mission, one of the great things that we have had an opportunity to do, and really it's because of how we've set ourselves up as an organization in the Upper Peninsula, is we serve on the Collaborative Development Council, which was established two years ago by the Michigan Economic Development Council. They broke the state down into 10 regions, with the Upper Peninsula being region number one, and they have a lead agency economic development organization that serves on a task force that meets monthly in Lansing with the MEDC lead staff. We're very honored to be serving that role in the Upper Peninsula. And what we do in return is collaborate with our partners in the 14 other counties in the Upper Peninsula. We meet monthly with the other economic development organizations, and then bimonthly, we bring in the regional support team from the state, which is Governor's Office, MDOT, DNR, MDARD, all of the state agencies that support Region One, so we have everybody at the same table. And then quarterly, any economic development stakeholder in the Upper Peninsula that's interested can join us every third month of the year, and we typically try and bring in a speaker or do some training that time so we can hit as many people as possible. These are just some of the projects that we've been able to work on with our colleagues across the UP. Advocacy becomes more and more important if you're working with business, when you have different types of issues that affect them, and we like to look at it as being the eyes and ears, in particular for small business. Small business doesn't have a staff, a government relations person, or a lobbyist typically, so we want to make sure we can keep people as informed as possible. We do this in a variety of ways. The Government Relations Task Force, we belong to the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance, which is 14 counties just south of the bridge through Marquette County. We are 14 counties representing 7,000 businesses. So it adds, when we have an issue that affects both northern, lower, and the Upper Peninsula, which there are many because we have some very similar issues to deal with, we go in with a much stronger voice than just coming from Marquette County, and that's been very helpful. Of course, the Marquette County ambassadors, and we have a big legislative reception that you've all been invited to this Friday with them. I also serve on the Fix the Debt Michigan Steering Committee, which, of course, we're a long way from having that federal issue resolved. These are just some of the action items, sampling of them, from 2012 that we worked on. The dashboard numbers are in your annual report as well. These are also put on our website, marquette.org, on a monthly basis. We don't have the community wealth numbers yet. What we like to do is compare median household income, population, average home sale prices, but they're not out for 2012 yet, so stay tuned to have those updated, and you will receive those in your monthly, or your weekly news from me. Just a quick map of Marquette County to show that we do work with clients across the county, pretty much based on population, where you see a majority of our clients, where a majority of the population is, where the density is, which would make sense. But we do work with clients all over the Upper Peninsula. The non-region-specific are ones that may not have made up their mind where they're going to locate or may have multiple locations. Just a couple client testimonials that we throw in of some projects that we've worked on in the last year. And again, I believe we do have, you did get an annual report, and if you have any questions, we are here to answer any of those. I thank you for your attention and time.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners, any questions for Amy? Commissioner Ryan?
Could you expand a little bit on the relationship that you and the partnership have with Michigan's economic development organizations?
Sure. Again, we serve as the lead agency for the Region One, which is the Upper Peninsula.
What does that mean?
Well, what we're expected to do is to be the liaison between the economic developers in the region and the MEDC. So whether it's new programs or processes, when I'm down there, I bring that information back. If they're having any issues or concerns, I'm able to go to Lansing, bring that information back, let them know that, you know, we're not happy with the process, it's not working for our business clients, how do we work through that? And so really, it's kind of an exchange where I'm kind of the middleman, going back and forth. One of the things that we've been able to do collectively is, there's so many economic development agencies in the Upper Peninsula that are very small, they may be one staff person or a half a staff person. And collectively, the group said, "We need another set of hands in order to be able to use these new systems that you're bringing up, the software criteria, being able to list sites and properties on this UP-wide software system." And so what we did was write a proposal to the MEDC for a staff person that would work in all 15 counties. And we were granted that about a year and a half ago, so his contract's up at the end of this year. We're looking for a renewal, but it's Derek Bushes who is in our office. We've trained him, we manage him, we provide him the resources to do this, and then he goes out to the other 14 counties to assist them in anything they need from the MEDC perspective as far as the new programs, software type of things that we're doing. For example, the Location One, which is our sites and properties listings, we list the city's properties there. We have about 400 properties across the UP, and they're drilled down to each area on what they want to show on their site. Derek's been working at least a year, and we just signed a contract with the UP Realtors' Association where they'll actually do an electronic dump of all their commercial sites and properties into the database that we have so that we don't have to spend all the time trying to figure out what's available, what's not available. So that's really going to help us as well, but in particular, some of the smaller communities that just don't have the time and the staff to do that.
Any other commissioner wishing to ask any questions? Commissioner Coyne?
Thank you, Amy. I have two questions. What is your annual budget?
It's just under $700,000.
Okay. And that's 75% public, 25%?
Backwards, 75% private, 25% public, yes.
I assume you're going to be approaching the commission at a later date to try to elicit our support. I've been involved in watching this organization, and I'm really impressed by its involvement into, you know, really major economic developer. When you come to us, I would personally think you might receive a friendlier welcome if you could be more specific, because you're going to come at budget time, when you have to compete with paving roads and providing basic services. Provide us with some specifics that you have accomplished for the city of Marquette, the businesses in Marquette, the specifics, because, you know, it's hard to not pave a street and have somebody working with somebody downstate that doesn't, I mean, so I think that's something that will convince me one way or the other. Specifics as to what Marquette has benefited in the past year by your organization, other than this vast network of connections, which is nothing to be sneezed at at all, but specifics.
Great.
If you can do that, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, and I have those numbers.
Well, not numbers, I want specifics.
You want more anecdotal too, as well as which companies?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thank you for the advice.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Amy, we had this discussion before, but I'd like to see names and dates and times of who specifically you helped with the city of Marquette. What was done for them and what benefited them?
Other than this vast network of connections, which is nothing to be sneezed at at all, but specifics. If you, if you can do that, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, and I have those numbers.
Well, not numbers, I want specifics.
You want more anecdotal too, as well as which companies?
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
No problem. Thank you for the advice.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Amy, we had this discussion before, but I'd like to see names and dates and times.
Of?
Of who specifically you helped with the city of Marquette. What was done for them and what benefit was to the city? I don't want to see contact numbers, I don't want to see just numbers. I want to see the detail on it, on indoor. I want to see facts. And I would also think we would be remiss if we don't point out that the building you're in, we have given you. So if the city of Marquette owns that building, we allow you to use it. Is that correct, right?
No, we own the building, you own the land.
We own the land, okay. Indeed, we do own the land of that building.
Correct.
It's our contribution that we're certainly continuing to give to the park.
We, we do... Your first question, we can provide specific clients that we've worked with to a point. The most critical thing in economic development is being trusted and being a confidant to a business person sitting in front of you and opening their books. So depending on where a company is in a process, we just can't share an entire list of who we visited. Now, we can on a retention side, say we visited, you know, we've visited 50 companies in the city, for example, which is what we did in 2012. And we can certainly share who we've visited with, but it's going to completely depend on where they are in the process because sometimes businesses come to us for not a good reason. I mean, that they're struggling and you don't want that on the street in any way, shape or form. So I think we can work with you on some of that, but I, I certainly can't betray a, a client's trust in the process. Part two, yes, we do own the building, you own the land and we do currently have a lease for 25 years that we pay for, I think it's $100 a year. Just to clarify that, yes.
Commissioner Coyne?
Amy, to follow up on Fred's comment and yours, I certainly don't want to cause you a difficulty of confidence, but it would be very effective if the business that was helped could come and say, I have, or, or send us a letter or a documentation. This is what, where I am and because of your efforts. I don't want to get into people's personal problems. But if there are businesses like that, it would be very helpful for us to know that in terms of balancing that with what we're dealing with.
Right. No, I completely agree. I think there's a balance there. You know, for example, Dave Arrow would be happy to come. We worked with him on superior rehabilitation. They have about 25 employees right now. They also reused the Women's Center, the office space there. There was a need for them to be able to rent that space as well, so it was a really good match for the companies.
Well, if you can have a whole bunch more of those, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Compani?
I know you have used the city, or we've actually come to you for certain services. Can you give us examples of?
Probably the most that in the last couple of years, it would be any type of marketing of, of properties. You know, we check in with Dennis quite often just to make sure if there's anything going on. I check with Bill. The customs agent is going to be one that, that Bill and I are, are meeting on shortly. But probably mostly marketing of properties. We want to make sure we have the most up-to-date information to, for the site consultants.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Which brings up an interesting point. When I was perusing the website today, I didn't see the city web address anywhere on the site. But you are, of course, featured several times on our site. So I wonder about the validity of how the marketing of properties goes when we don't have basic information like the City of Marquette website prominently displayed.
We have all the municipalities listed on the, on the website. I'll send you a link. It's, it's got all 19 townships.
I would certainly like to, like to see that. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the LSAP at this time? Seeing none, Amy, I want to thank you and your staff on the report and your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to presentation number four, UP Engineers and Architects by Pat Coleman and, or Coleman and Prescott Park Advisory Committee Chairman Bob Chapman.
This is encouraging. Our electronics are working. I'm Bob Chapman. I'm the chairperson of the Prescott Park Advisory Committee. And I'm here to give you a very brief history on the development of our inclusive playground project and to mention some of the concerns that have evolved during the planning of that project. About two and a half years ago, at the end of a Prescott Park Advisory Committee meeting, one of our members said this. What Prescott Park needs is a playground that is inclusive. A playground that all kids can have fun on, no matter what their level of functioning. Thus, the idea for a new inclusive playground was born. The idea has since been enthusiastically supported by the Marquette community and is identified in the city's recreation master plan as a high priority. We're here tonight to present this idea to you in its current iteration. We believe that this playground will further enhance the quality of life for Marquette residents and visitors by providing a unique recreational facility for young people of all abilities. It will be fun, inclusive, and even educational for the kids, parents, and grandparents that use it, while at the same time preserving the natural environment in and around the playground. Five critical issues were considered during the site selection for the playground and I want to review those with you. First, the site is located at the southern end of the island where development is permitted versus the northern two-thirds of the island, which is to remain natural and primitive. Second, the safety of kids using the playground is of utmost importance. Thus, concerns about traffic and distance from Lake Superior were considered. Third, availability of safe and convenient parking is critical. Fourth, barrier-free restroom facilities must be close by. And fifth and finally, we strive to select a site where there will be minimal disturbance of natural features, including trees. The city issued an RFP for the development of this concept and the Upper Peninsula Engineers and Architects firm was awarded the contract. They have almost completed their work and we're here to request your support for moving this project forward. Pat Coleman, standing behind me, of UPEA, is here to give you the details. I want to thank you for letting us present this exciting and worthwhile project. Pat?
Thank you, Bob. It's great to be here. It's a very exciting project and we're real pleased to be a part of it. We're going to give you an update. We're going to talk about the process that was, that we went through to, with the Prescott, Prescott Park Advisory Committee to reach this final concept. Look at the final concept itself and as well as some numbers, the cost of the project. Project began in December and we had a community open house with, and where the entire community was invited to join us to talk about the project early in December. We met a week later with the advisory committee and reviewed the results of that. We've developed some final concepts and those were presented to the community on January 9th. Final review then by the PyPAC group on the 30th of January. One of the first things that we did was to develop the project vision statement, which is shown here. And that is that the PyPAC wants the playground to be totally inclusive and the PyPAC wants the playground to be a destination attraction for the park. We began actually with three sites. We went out, looked at opportunities and the third site would have been the existing playground area, which is down over here, actually in this area. But two sites, that site was quickly thrown out because of concern about the distance to an accessible toilet facility, long ways to a bathroom. The existing one, which is uphill, is not accessible. It's in deteriorating condition and certainly due for replacement at some point. But the PyPAC didn't want to take that on as part of this project, so we looked at two other sites. The old Deer Yard site here and the, near the Moosewood Center. The Moosewood Center, well, I'll get to that in a second. In terms of developing the final program, people, and this is what the public told the PyPAC through our, our community participation, that they wanted nature-themed play equipment in order to fit within the park well. That they wanted to really have separate areas for the 5 to 12 age group and the 2 to 5 age group. They wanted swings so that were, again, accessible, that would be inclusive, that all children could participate in. To see some improved parking for handicapped persons. They wanted benches and other amenities on the site. Some landforms such as boulders and berms and so forth. Having key entrance points, really gateways into the site. The site should be fenced to kind of contain children's play. Having outdoor gathering, interpretation of history or nature. Having some sustainable elements in it such as rain gardens and other, using recycled materials was desirable. And to have other like garden donor areas if possible. The Deer Yard concept, again, this is where the zoo used to be. The newer pavilion on the park is to the north. And we laid out a playground that looks like this with separated play areas and a lot of fun things in here. It was going to require some additional widening of the road to create more parking and there was a lot of concern about parking at this site because the pavilion is, is used a lot for special events, community events, and that can really create some parking issues at that location. So there's concern about that as well as the distance from this playground to the pavilion for the restrooms. It's actually quite a ways away. Second area that we developed concepts for is near Moosewood Nature Center. And the committee did select this option. If we go back a second, you'll note there's a driveway here off of Peter White and then an entrance off of, is it Lakeshore or Peter White? Which, will the real Lakeshore Boulevard please come forward? No, here and so we have a, actually a, a kind of a disorganized parking area in here. In fact, a lot of that you might consider to be unused space in, in your premier park. So the way this laid out, the other issue we had to deal with is we have a water and sewer line, both that run right, right through this. And so we were pinched to try and stay off of that, those utilities. But again, we have two major play areas for the older kids and the younger kids. Every effort has been made to work this play area in and around mature trees. There may be a few trees that could, would need to be cut. We haven't identified those yet. Should the project move forward and you go on to final design, at that time, there would be an inventory and a determination on the trees. And again, an attempt to work the existing trees right into the playground. We saw that as very desirable and that really was our goal here. We have more of a defined parking lot with some sidewalks to allow for a very free access. The restrooms are right here in the Moosewood Facility, right there. ADA compliant and, and ready to be used with this project. We have some existing parking that exists on Peter White Drive and we would propose an entrance off that as well as the primary entrance here and here into the site. It would all be fenced and so forth. So that was our initial concept and we came back then with the actual equipment layout that's shown here. Really not a lot else changed on it. We do have some rain gardens and, and some potential picnic areas that would work in with the proposed wetland restoration being done by Moosewood. Really nice proximity to the store and the existing pavilion here. We see a lot of potential synergy there as well. We have, you know, a lot of accessible parking. We have considered pedestrian circulation and really making primary entrance points accessible paths. Again, the goal of this facility is to be all-inclusive. That is, it's to be used and can be used by children of all ages, abilities. Whether they're in a wheelchair, they can play with their friends who perhaps may not be in a wheelchair right in the midst of the play area. Some gathering areas, again, with that nature-themed logs and berms. Just some images and these were images that our community involvement participants selected as things that they wanted to see and then we would incorporate those into the plans. So having gateways, making it artistic. We've got some different images for the types of play equipment. And this is what I'm talking about when I mean inclusive, where somebody in a wheelchair can get into this rocker, if you will, this platform that rocks and actually help move it with their arms and have fun right with their friends and family. Again, more nature-based equipment kinds of things. We've been working with Superior Play. They're an equipment provider right here in the Upper Peninsula and they provided some conceptual 3D images of the, how this might look with the 5 to 12 area and so forth, 2 to 5 area. The surface that we see here and is poured-in-place rubber material and really we looked at several options for the play area surface. This has to meet ADA as well as safety requirements. So if a child falls, they land on something that has some give. Poured-in-place rubber is by far the most expensive, but it is also the, requires the least amount of maintenance. And that was something they saw as very, very desirable. So of course, when people started this process, they didn't really know what things were going to cost. And people like to dream big and so that's what we're going to show you first is the, the big dream and then something a little more realistic perhaps. So the big dream is 841,000. Couple things to note, the walkways and the surfacing itself was $245,000 of that and the equipment itself, about $337,000. You know, some other improvements in terms of parking lots and amenities and other site improvements. It adds up in a hurry. So the middle option, the X's represent things that could be eliminated. An entrance over here on Peter White. And, you know, eliminating some tree planting and landscaping we do and making the play area itself, both of them, a bit smaller. We knocked about $100,000 out of the playground equipment budget with the resulting reduction in the walkways and the, and the poured-in-place rubber surface. It's still a, a lot of money. And then kind of a base option, which nobody really seemed too excited about. Wouldn't you agree, Bob? It really doesn't do all the things that people wanted to see done. The playground equipment stays about the same, a little bit less under this scenario. So again, we have the three options and I think that the committee, the Prescott Park Advisory Committee and their friends of the Prescott Playground subgroup Park Advisory Committee and their, uh, friends of the Prescott Playground subgroup really have their eyes set somewhere on this one. Uh, what they're really looking for, for you, I guess, is the, your approval for them to begin their fundraising because they see this as their challenge. Uh, there's the possibility, uh, and they'd like to keep it open, to come back to you and request that a grant application be filed that could pay fifty to seventy-five percent of the costs of the, this project. So they are taking on, if they go with the middle ground here, they're taking on a fundraising effort of more than three-hundred-thousand dollars, and certainly that's a, a big challenge, we know, uh, given the economy, but I, they seem to be really excited about it and up for it. So a couple of things, uh, if you could, uh, give your blessing to the site in this concept, um, recognizing that as the project goes forward, that, uh, there's a lot of details to be worked out, um, in terms of, uh, the, you know, refining that concept, making it fit within their budget, um, and, uh, the ability to do all the things they want to do. So I guess I'm, we're here, uh, Bob and I, in case there's any questions. There's a few other members of the committee present, I'm sure, who would be glad to, uh, step forward and answer any questions you might have.
Pat, thank you, Pat. I'm going to turn this over to my fellow commissioners now. I'm sure they have some questions for you. Uh, commissioners, uh, Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Ms. Coleman, the restrooms would be provided by Moosewood, is that correct, the accessible restrooms? They would be in the Moosewood facility, or?
The restrooms for this would be in the Moosewood.
Would they be available at all hours, or, or could they be?
Uh, during the park's open hours, yes, as, as they are now, as I understand it. Those restrooms are available, uh, to park users.
Okay.
And, uh, by the way, Moosewood is pretty excited about this synergy from this project. They participated in all of the meetings. Um, we also had input from the Audubon people on this, uh, because there are some, uh, uh, bird feeders, uh, kind of at the north end next to the Moosewood building. Um, we also had input from the Marquette Beautification Group as well on this.
Commissioner Ryan?
Is there some indication that, that grant funding could be available? I mean, is this?
Absolutely. There is. The Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund or Land and Water Conservation, uh, funding could provide fifty to, up to seventy-five percent of this project cost. Um, the project is in your recreation gra, uh, plan, which makes it eligible for that funding.
I do know that when you talk about, um, being a destination point, um, certainly Mattson Park is now. You know, I tend to spend a lot of time at playgrounds with grandchildren and, and, uh, I enjoy it too, by the way, but, no. Um, you know, and we see, I see buses there from other towns, you know, where kids coming to Marquette to, uh, play at that playground. So I think done right, this, this could be a real asset to Prescott.
Yeah, and not that Prescott needs to be a destination. It already is unto itself, and we want to make that clear. Um, and the Prescott Park Advisory Committee, I, I think it's significant that it's the only park in the city that has its own kind of, uh, keepers, if you will. This committee that was appointed by the city to, uh, oversee the development of the park, and, and so they've taken this on. I think that's pretty impressive. Um, so the park doesn't need this to be a destination. It already is, but certainly this playground, their vision for the playground was that it would be a destination, a wonderful, wonderful place.
And I think by being a destination, you know, it introduces kids to Prescott and, and to Moosewood, as you point out, that, uh, you know, it exposes them to, to a lot of different worlds as well.
In that same vein, um, the only comparable facility in the upper peninsula that I'm aware of right now is a playground at the Well State Park, which is kind of what got us excited about this when we saw that playground, and, uh, it's an inclusive playground, uh, and it's very busy, and it's very well received by the people that use it, according to the park people there.
I guess the question becomes, how do we proceed? They've asked some questions. I think the manager may have an answer, Your Honor.
Uh, city manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, and, uh, thank you also to the PiPAC and to Coleman Engineering. I'm not going to speak in any way to the merit of the, the individual project, but in effect, an advisory committee's made a recommendation to the city commission. Typically, uh, what I've seen is that the city commission takes a little bit of time deliberating that, have at least one public session where it can present it, can be presented to the broader community to provide feedback. Um, and so I would suggest you're at that point, uh, from what you've heard tonight. Uh, from the budget standpoint, I, both from the specific discussion about fundraising and then, uh, potentially any kind of investment the city might make, we're eminently getting ready to have the work session tomorrow morning on fundraising, and I'd suggest we could probably talk about that in more detail tomorrow. Uh, from the budget standpoint, of course, this goes into kind of the same set of deliberations that every other project that you've seen come before you is going to go into. And so this is a, this is another, uh, uh, project that will, will and should be considered by the commission in the upcoming capital discussions.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Coyne, you have the floor.
Um, well, I'm going to say two things. One sounds kind of negative, but we are going to have a meeting tomorrow, a work session on fundraising and committees, and that's an issue we're dealing with. And I, I bring this up because, uh, I'll just repeat the name, the Prescott Advisory Committee. That does not give them the control and oversight of the park. That is the responsibility of the elected officials, this body. So, uh, we will take your recommendations, and we, as elected people, have to decide what to do, not, not the advisory committee. It is an advisory committee, and we've had issues with that recently, not, uh, which caused great problems. That's why we're having a work session. I think, um, so the fundraising part causes a red light for me, okay? That has to be solved with a policy of the city. Uh, that being said, uh, I personally must compliment your committee on very prompt action. I mean, this is in a year's time. You've come with recommendations, recommendations, uh, and advice. Uh, I also thought it was very, uh, well-thought-out and inclusive and really appreciate the effort, uh, and a good job from the engineering company, so. But we have to deal with this issue of fundraising, and we'll then also have to put you in the cycle of the budget session, which, uh, we would determine whether you can afford, you know, an eight, a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar one or a six-hundred-thousand-dollar one, but that's, it's got to be worked out with us. So, thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Boy, what a great project. I mean, I'm just excited about this. This is, this is really terrific, and I, and I do look forward to figuring out how we can make it all work. Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, I do see Mr. Stewart in the audience. I would like to address a question to him regarding the Moosewood, if that's possible.
Uh, would you like to go up there with them and?
Mr. Stewart, my only, uh, question is, is looking at it a little bit more from the Moosewood perspective of how you would see the feed-in and the, the synergy between the two, uh, the two activities. If you could speak to that, please.
I would like to. Thank you very much for inviting me up. It's a pleasure to be up here tonight. Um, we have, uh, noticed this proceeded at a very rapid rate, and we have had our executive director, um, uh, working on the PiPAC committee as part of this. And it, and just in the short time, as we've been apprised of what's going on, we have had some concerns, and we've raised some of those concerns, uh, at the January ninth meeting. Um, uh, the biggest concern we have is just the close proximity of the playground to us. As we look at our future there, and our hopes, although we haven't expressed them very loudly, would be to have a larger facility there at some point in the future. We kind of find ourselves hemmed in between the Poudre Pond Project, the, uh, Community Gardens, the Senior Pavilion, and now the playground. It offers a really limited space for us to not only look at, um, an expansion of the building, but also a place where we could have activities. We do a maple syruping demonstration outside the center. Um, we have, um, a number of other, uh, activities, uh, like the bird watching, uh, that goes on there. And I have spoken with Lake Superior Audubon. They have concerns about just people who do have limited accessibility, who do come here. It's a, it's a really premier birding area in Marquette, the neck of Prescott, and some of those birds do get funneled in right at the center there. Um, I did prepare a, a letter for you tonight, uh, that, uh, kind of identifies some of those things. Um, some of the other concerns that, um, we have would be, uh, just the way the, the parking and the drive are designed. Uh, it's designed now as a cul-de-sac that would come up in front of the building. Uh, it would literally make it impossible for buses really to come up and drop off people. So as a result, if we do have, um, uh, and it's sort of ironic, uh, people in wheelchairs, uh, limited access, uh, accessibility, uh, it would, in the wintertime at least, really demand some way to clear sidewalks and be able to move those people up all the way from the end of the parking lot there, because I don't believe buses can get in. Uh, we also have concerns about snow plowing, uh, the limited amount of parking there. Uh, one of the things that we noted was the fact that, um, the, you know, the playground would be used probably May to October. I don't know how much use it would get the rest of the year, but we're kind of limited with just, uh, if you looked at the drawing, about eight parking spots right at the center, and the rest would be farther down, uh, past the main area of the playground. So, uh, the parking thing, and it, when we look at our fundraisers, things like the haunted bog, we really have some concerns about, you know, how that would, that would work as well. So we did see some things there that, um, uh, were, um, things that we would have to deal with. We're certainly intrigued with the idea of the playground there and the idea that would bring lots of people. Um, looked a couple other things. A propane tank would get moved, and that was a concern because we weren't sure, and it, where it would go and where it would be that it could be filled, uh, if we were to continue to stay on propane, uh, there at the, the center. So while we're really excited about the idea of more people coming to Prescott, that's one of the things that we've worked on, and coming to Moosewood, we have expressed some concerns with the design, and so it's, where's the, the balance now between, uh, where we are and where this playground would be. And I think the fact that, we feel like it's crammed into that little tiny area close to us, and I don't know if there's a way of, uh, we, there's been a discussion of unused space. Uh, I know there's some underground lines that they're trying to work around there, but there is space at the other end of, uh, that area there on the southwest corner of the ice cream stand. Uh, if it, if it has to go in there, I guess that would be something that we would recommend. I, I know that, uh, there's been also concern about moving the trees around, and a lot of big trees, particularly spruce and white pine, are at that end as well, that they've kind of earmarked for removal. So, um, we're kind of mixed feelings with what has happened there. And as I said, part of it has been, it's just gone so quickly that to give, uh, our board, I, I polled our board twice now to get input from them and kind of, uh, sifted through all the, the thoughts and concerns that they've had, and, uh, certainly there are some reservations about having as close as it is to the, the Moosewood Nature Center.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for having me up, and I'll leave these with, um, Mr. Blough. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have other questions?
Uh, just a second. Commissioners, any, uh, further que, yeah. Commissioner Kevensy?
I just, I don't have questions for anyone specific, probably other than staff, but I do want to say that I think it's great that there, there is a committee looking at investing so much at the island, and I, from a fundraising perspective, if, if it goes that route, I do agree with Commissioner Coyne that we, as a commission, have some policy issues we need to take care of to make sure that, I guess, our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed if we allow the community groups to come forward with this. I have no doubt in my mind that the community would support this, foundations, grants. Um, that's not my hesitation. The, the thing that caught me was that development is only allowed on certain, I guess it's the south portion of the island. Um, and for staff, this would be a question for you. Does that mean that playgrounds could be developed in the old deer herding area versus where this development is proposed by our committee?
Well, that was one of the areas, if I can answer the question. That was one of the areas that was looked at as, uh, the presentation had illustrated, and, and certainly it's been an area that has been, um, had an alternative use, uh, when the zoo was there. And so, um, we've had other uses, uh, of that area, um, for public use. Um, and so, um, I guess it was our interpretation that it could be used, um, if in fact it was the community's desire to establish a playground there.
And the only reason I bring this up is, as we develop our waterfront plan, um, you know, that would certainly, if we had a playground right there, and that is some of the land that we could develop in some way or another, it, I guess it would put us in a position it would land lock us for future planning we might have for the Marina area up there. I, seeing this for the first time, I just want to make sure, long-term, that we're looking at, at all the options. And I, I don't have the plan, um, for Parks and Recs. I haven't seen that, but I, I'm just wondering if there's any comment from staff, location-wise, where it might fit best for long-term. I don't know if that's putting them on the spot, but...
I don't think we have an answer. Thank you, Commissioner. I don't think we'd be comfortable providing an answer this evening.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, you know, I, I think they're pretty limited areas. We can almost picture them. You know, there's where the playground is now, there's the old deer yard area, and there's the area we're talking about here, and that's pretty much it, I think, as far as any development can occur. And, um, hopefully it can be worked out in such a way that it works for everybody. You know, I, I think, I'm really enthusiastic about the playground project, but certainly the Moosewood issues are something of concern too, and, and, uh, is this something that staff can, can help with, Bill, or?
Yeah, absolutely, sir. I'm just very reluctant to, uh, provide an answer this evening.
Yeah, no, I don't mean that.
It's certainly something the PiPAC has been looking at for some time. Uh, staff has been working, multiple departments of staff, both the community development, engineering people, and the, the community services people have been reviewing this, but I, I do just feel uncomfortable putting them on this.
No, I'm, I'm not asking that for tonight. I just mean, are, you know, are our engineering people, are people available to provide assistance if, if needed, you know?
Absolutely. In fact, I, I can tell you, the, the, one of the good news stories for, for another project we had where we put all the archives online, is that all of the original documentation for when Prescott was actually turned over to the city is all available in the archives. People can kind of track back through the history of all the commission decisions on, uh, how these different specific activities and purposes were originally picked for different parts of the park. And so we, we would be able to provide that kind of information as part of historical continuity in the event that the commission is struggling with potentially different uses that people are interested in.
I'm, I'm guessing we can fairly easily agree on what the pieces of the puzzle are. It's just how the pieces come together so that all of the interests are protected. And I just wanted to mention one thing, Commissioner Coyne, when you mentioned we had had some problems regarding fundraising, it didn't involve the Prescott Park advi, in case somebody jumped to that conclusion.
Commissioner Coyne?
Uh, thank you for clarifying that. I didn't mean to imply that.
You didn't, just some people might.
Okay. Uh, I, I would like to, I don't want to be in the position of, of hearing this wonderful plan and then kind of forcing it on, uh, Moosewood and, uh, and then getting, I mean, that's not the way to get public support. I, I personally like to not make any decisions or jump up and down and do happy dances, uh, for the plan until you can come back with Moosewood saying, "We've worked together here, and we've got a plan here. We might have to shrink the playground a little bit or move some stuff," but I can't very well be supportive if we're hearing kind of some problems. And I think it's not imprudent to ask you to try to work that out and then come back with a plan, and by that time, we'll have an idea about fundraising. So, uh, that's where I'm standing, and, uh, congratulations to both of you if you can work that out.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Stenner?
Sure. Um, first, I want to say I'm happy to see something like this. I think putting together an all-inclusive playground, especially around Moosewood and the store and the picnic area, a place that gets that traffic, is... area, a place that gets that traffic, is, is a real value to the community. So I'm very glad that you guys have put the energy into it. Overall, I like the design. I'm very glad that Moosewood has stepped up and, and expressed their concerns, because I share the concerns with Commissioner Coyne, that if, if it's going to hurt something that, that I think is also a huge value into the community, or at least create some, some additional burden, I'm hoping that can be resolved. I do have two technical questions as far as the design is concerned about when the parking was, was decided upon, or when you're looking at how many parking spaces are available. You know, I guess, is that taking into account current trends that the millennials and youngers are not getting driver's licenses as much? And so, you know, the newer generations are spending more time off of cars and may, may not need the same amount of parking? And then the other technical question being the, I understand that it's, that it's all-inclusive, everybody's going to be able to use this park, but is there any way we can do that and get away from that rubberized ground covering? I don't know why putting rubber over dirt for kids seems just really odd, and I know that makes it easier to access, but those are the two questions.
Your insurance carrier will, will thank you for investing in this material, because slips and falls happen. You know, it used to be we'd get bumped on the head, and you'd go home crying, and today, somebody wants to sue you about it. So that, you know, it has to be one of several materials, and we considered all of these. One is what they like to call engineered wood fiber. We would know it as woodchips, but what it is, it's compacted to a specific density so that Johnny will bounce rather than, you know, really get hurt. The problem with that material is that it continually needs to be maintained and replaced as it, you know, blows around or gets kicked around. We've all seen the holes at the ends of slides and swings where kids land, you know, hundreds of kids, and pretty soon you have a hole there. So it, it does have some maintenance considerations. Certainly, the wood fiber is fourth of the cost, but, you know, within 10 years, it might only be half the cost. And then beyond that. So it has to continually be replaced, and you can't just go to the local mill and get woodchips. You have to buy the specific material that allows it to be compacted correctly. The parking, you know, basically, what we did was organize what's already there. So, and, and did eliminate the one driveway which didn't serve much function except for the buses perhaps that would circulate through there for Moosewood. If, if the water and sewer lines weren't an issue, I think we could certainly move things around. And I see the presentation isn't up on the screen anymore, but I'd like to address the location south of the store and the pavilion, if we could. Yeah, there is a lot of concern about the traffic here and, and putting anything down in this area, just being close to the road. That, they, they didn't want it to be the centerpiece of the island, but rather to be visible, but yet not obtrusive. And then again, we're, we would be, get to be a long ways away from restrooms, and that, that's a big consideration, particularly for parents of handicapped children. We heard this from them. And, you know, we had a lot of people involved in this project and in the planning. So I'm a little surprised that today Moosewood comes in and says, "We don't like it." Their person was at the table at every meeting. So, you know, I, I wish that he had related some of their concerns to us a little sooner, and we could have perhaps adjusted things or worked things out with the Moosewood people. We thought everything was okay. You know, the bus situation, you know, this is not that far away, and buses can pull alongside here and park during school times. There's not going to be a lot of other use in this parking lot during the school year when school buses may come. So I think that can be worked out. You know, if we, if we didn't have those water and sewer lines, maybe we could shift things a little bit. And there may be some willingness by the city and engineering to consider shifting those lines. I don't know. The idea was to come up with a concept and come up with some costs that the committee could use for fundraising. And so what they were asking today is, do you support this site and allow them to go out and fundraise for it? That's really all. We recognize there's going to be lots of details to work out with the neighbors, with the city itself, with engineering, with everybody to make this thing work as we get into construction-level details. We're not at that point yet.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Yeah. I definitely wish, I mean, I think the concept is great, and I'm really happy to see these sketches, and I have no doubt that, that you'll be able to work things out. Unfortunately, living in a town of 22,000 people, you probably have 100,000 opinions on, on how everything should go, and you'll never totally resolve it. But I have faith that you guys will be able to figure out some of those, those details. Again, just because I hate that rubber flooring, I'm kind of just curious how, what the long-term maintenance cost of that is. I understand that you're going to have to keep maintaining wood or anything like that, but, you know, for how expensive that is, how long is that really going to last us? And what's it going to cost to, to replace and maintain? And you don't necessarily have to answer it. It's just a rhetorical question to keep up. Okay, to keep in mind. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I was just going to say, you know, this is kind of deteriorating into a do-it-yourself project here, and I don't think this is the right way to do it. Kind of a debate between two organizations who are both trying to do good things. I, I agree with Commissioner Coyne. I think we should suggest they, you know, take it back, discuss their issues, and then come back to us again. Because I, I don't think we can solve this here today, putting one group or the other on the spot, truly.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess, is, is there any kind of timeline you're looking for on this? I realize you, you want to get started on fundraising if that's the course, but I mean, is there any other considerations of, of time that?
No, we have no deadlines that we have to meet here, except what we impose on ourselves, and we have not imposed any yet.
Commissioner Combenzi?
I think the main hang-up for me is the site selection. And I, as a commissioner, I would like to look at, I guess, the previous plans of, of the island, all that came before us. I love the project. I'm just not sure I'm sold on the site. And so I'm not sure how we, as a commissioner, are going to go forward with this. I mean, we can send it back to the committee. I think there are specific things each of us have brought up tonight that we, you know, hope to get, get out of it. And maybe the city manager has some suggestion what would help, I guess, you go forward.
No, thank you, Commissioner. Like, like I shared, from my perspective, this process is pretty clear. Your advisory committee's made a recommendation. You've told them to go back and do some additional things. And I think from that standpoint, that's as far as you can take the meeting tonight. Certainly, we're aware of this. It comes forward in the budget process independently. We're going to be having other discussions that address part of that issue as early as tomorrow. And we'll certainly provide any additional information the commission might need to have a sense of how, how the property's been used in the past, to give some sense of continuity and place. So I don't see any challenges to, where the commissions currently add in their deliberation.
Thank you. Any other commissioner wishing to address this Prescott Isle plan? Seeing none, I'm going to thank you people very much for the presentation. And one of the things that Pat Coleman had touched on was that the days of Park and Rec just going out and buying playground equipment is gone forever, because it's dictated by our city insurance carrier. Each year, the Department of Park and Rec has to send a city employee to a seminar to look at how children have gotten injured in the past, how to prevent it, and what kind of equipment that the city can actually buy now that's approved by both the seminar people, the companies, and the city insurance carrier. So that's a very, very important part of how we end up buying equipment for the playground. It's dictated by everybody else except the city of Marquette. They have to buy, buy the safety issues. So again, I want to thank you all for coming up here and presenting your thoughts and concerns to us commissioners, and thank you again. And with that, we'll move to number five, proclamation, City Clerk, National Engineers Week.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas engineers use their professional scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to solve our problems, and whereas engineers have helped meet the major technological challenges of our times, from rebuilding damaged infrastructure due to natural disasters, to designing innovative ways to replace our aging infrastructure. And whereas engineers plan, design, and direct the manufacture or construction of nearly everything we interact with on a daily basis, from computer microchips to highways, roads, and bridges, residential and commercial buildings, to automobiles and airplanes. And whereas engineers are needed today and in the near future to design and develop crucial infrastructure, including but not limited to roads and bridges, water and sewer utilities, levees and waterways, and universities and schools. And whereas not only is a diverse and vigorous engineering workforce needed, but we also need to encourage young men and women to pursue the field of engineering as a career. And whereas National Engineers Week provides professional engineers, community groups, teachers, parents, and students with the opportunity to interact with and learn about the many facets of the engineering profession through special educational programs. And whereas National Engineering Engineers Week aims to increase the understanding of and the interest in engineering and technol- technology careers, and it also aims to promote literacy in mathematics and science. And whereas National Engineers Week is celebrated during the week of George Washington's birthday to honor the contributions that our first president of the United States, a military engineer and land surveyor made to engineering. Now therefore, I Johnny DePietro, Mayor of the City of Marquette, to hereby proclaim the week of February 17th through 23rd, 2013 as Engineers Week in the City of Marquette in conjunction with the celebration of National Engineers Week dated this 11th day of February 2013, and sign Johnny DePietro, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Very well read. Number six, boards and committees, going to recognize outgoing member, Nell Cooper, Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Could you meet me over at the lectern, please? Thank you, Nell, very much, for your years of service. Thank you, Nell, very much for your years of service.
You're welcome.
Certificate appreciation presented to Mel Cooper for volunteer effort on Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. Mayor Johnny DePietro and City Manager William Vida. And we thank you very much for all the years you've served. It was very, I know, interesting for all the things you've done for the arts and culture. And we appreciate it very much that you had been able to do this. I know you'll be coming back. And with that, we have a shirt and a city pin with that. And again, we thank you very much for your years of service.
Thank you.
And we have, I read some other committees that we have openings on, so when you go home tonight, think about it, and I'm sure you'll find something compatible for you.
All right.
Okay, thank you again. Let's give her a hand, applause. And at this time, I'd like to welcome new members, Amy Conover, Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, if she would please come up here, Christine Granger, Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, and David Brooks, Board of Review. And Amy, we want to thank you very much for coming on board to the Park, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I know you'll be very compatible with this board, and we know that you'll be very, very productive on it. So we thank you very much. And with that, we're going to give you a city pin. And with that, we're going to turn the speaker over to you and let you say a couple words to the city commissioners and the people in the audience and the people in TV land.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you.
Well, I shouldn't say Mr. Mayor.
No, no, Johnny's fine. I called you Amy, you call me Johnny.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay.
Well, I am really looking forward to this opportunity to serve. It'll be my first time serving on a board for the City of Marquette. I grew up here. I'm really anxious to look into this. And I will let you know, the first Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting that I attended, we did look over this, the project that was just discussed tonight with this playground. And, and I'm sure we will be discussing it more and, and staying involved with all of the changes that may occur and things to consider. I'm really looking forward to seeing all that's coming.
All the comments that you had heard tonight from the commissioners and the presentation and all that, I'm sure you'll have pretty interesting meetings coming up.
I'm sure we will.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
And then we've got David Brooks here. He's on the Board of Review, and he's excited to get his feet wet on this. So David, I'm going to give you a city pin, welcome you aboard, and also, I'm going to give you an opportunity to thank the city commissioners and the people in the audience for everything that you're going to tell them, and also on TV land. David, you have the floor.
Thank you, I think. Haven't served in the city before, but I've had businesses here in the past, and I've been here for most of my life now. Been gone for a little time, and I'm back, and I've been back since 2006, and glad to serve where I can. I appreciate this place. I love it here, and that's why, you know, that's why we're back again. So I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Can we have a round of applause for these two? Thank you, thank you. At this time, we're going to be doing reappointments. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, we have three appointments for the planning, reappointments for the Planning Commission with terms ending February 15th, 2016, and that'd be Taylor Klepp, Jacob Gooder, and Gary Moran. And we also have a Board of Zoning Appeals reappointment with the same term ending of February 2nd, February, excuse me, February 15th, 2016, and that is Mark Fuller.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Schneider?
I'd like to move that we make all reappointments as read.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Schneider?
You know, I know most of these people, and I really appreciate their, their ability to volunteer for us. I do want to express one, one concern to the commission staff is that we've got three planning commissioners now on the same appointment cycle, and that's an awfully big change, you know, if, if it is a change all at once. So it's just something I want us to be mindful of in, in future reappointments.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Coyne? Any other commissioner? Commissioner Combenzi?
I believe there's nine members on the Planning Commission, though, and it's every three years, so it's bound to happen.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, I'm going to ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. At this time, we'll open this section to public comment. Comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in an item being moved up on agenda at the commissioner's discretion. Is there anybody wishing to address the city commission? Please state your name and physical address, please. Thank you. Please state your name and physical address, please, thank you.
Michelle Butler, 3132 Island Beach Road, Lake Shore Boulevard, whatever it is. As many of you know, Clark Lambros passed away December 14th. And Clark's heart had become very weak, but he was always filled with a lot of love for Marquette and for this community. He'd always tell me, there's no shortcuts to good cooking, and he would also say that you give back to the community that's supporting you, which has always been our restaurant. First, it was bimbos for him, and now vangos. Clark was not always the face behind our good deeds, but he was always the deciding voice, and he always supported and worked hard on many projects, including Marquette's YMCA. Tonight, I'm here to continue the legacy of a longtime Marquette resident and businessman, Clark Lambros. We, the family, would like to make a large portion of our property on Lake Shore Boulevard available to the city so that it can be enjoyed by its citizens in perpetuity as a park, Clark's Park, in memory of Clark Lambros and his son, Clark Lambros Jr., who passed away September 11th, 1988. I've had the opportunity, along with Bill Sanders and Ken Chapsky, to meet and discuss this donation with several city officials, and they've all been very supportive of the idea. So here's basically how the proposal would go. We will sponsor for the city a 2013 application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund for the purchase of part of our property on Lake Shore Boulevard near Prescott Isle. The parcel is approximately 14 acres in size with 1,500 feet of frontage on Lake Superior, including fretage on the Dead River as well. As a family, we will provide the funds necessary to match this grant request so that the purchase of this property will come at no cost to the city. The Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund is available to state and local governments to provide assistance in the purchase and development of recreational lands. The profits from the sale of this land will then be used by our family to physically construct the park and amenities so that not only is the land in the public domain, but the physical park infrastructure as well. We're committed to covering the expenses in the application process and are posed to carry out the work with the city's support so that a final application can be presented to the commission for your approval at your March 25th meeting. I know Clark would be very proud to see this project come to fruition. He so wanted to honor Clarky, and I, along with Clark's daughters, Mina, Patty Joy, and all their families, want to honor them both. If you have any questions, Bill Sanders has been patiently sitting here waiting, and...
Yeah, there's no question and answer during public comment.
Okay, well then, there you have it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time? Please state your name and physical address.
Richard Smith, 814 Clark Street in Marquette. I wanted to comment on the planned or proposed Prescott Isle Park. Even though this project has been ongoing since December with the Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee, there's many of us in the public who has not learned about it until recently. The first I've heard about it is January 9th, or January 7th. Working out of town during the meetings that were held, I wasn't able to attend, as many other members of the public were not able to attend. I asked to be able to view the plans on the city website, and it was not posted until January 18th on the city's website. So there's many of us that are just finding out about the project and learning about it. I think the idea of a playground is a good idea, but I am opposed to the current site that's being recommended for the playground. I'm also opposed to a fence in that location. That's the entrance to Prescott Isle Park that everyone going in sees. The planned fence around this playground would be visible to all the people entering the park, and would dramatically change the character of the entrance of the park. And as Mr. Coleman mentioned, one of the driveways that has been used for many, many years would be closed by constructing the park in the current location that's planned. And that's my main reason for opposing the location. During peak use during the summer and during band concerts at Prescott Isle, I think closing this driveway as planned will create major traffic congestion. And I asked Mr. Coleman if he had done any studies of traffic patterns during the summer, during peak use, and that has not been done. And I've been there during busy times during the summer, and that driveway is used frequently to reduce congestion. In front of the Island Store, there's frequently congested traffic and people crossing the road to the band show, and having that alternative route to go into the...
One minute, sir.
A good alternative, in my opinion, is putting the playground inside the existing fence at the old pool site. There's already a fence there, and you could put another fence around the playground that's more removed from the main entrance to the park. Of course, Moosewood input would be necessary on that to see if they have plans, but I think that would be less disturbance and less visible of a fence than the planned location. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Please state your name and physical address, please.
My name is Dave Wiegand. I'm a resident, 350 Brookton Road. I'm in Marquette Township. I'm here to talk about, address at 400 Radisson Drive. It's the Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church over Shyrus Hills. I'd like to take a moment of your time to express my concerns and rising level of frustration with the city assessor's office with regards to this property. We originally put the property on the market August 30th of last year, and we offered it in two different ways. We offered to sell it as one single piece of property, then we offered to sell it as a split piece of property. The property more than makes itself available for that kind of a split. When we first approached the city assessor's office about it, which was in the first part of September, we were told that there's current moratorium on land divisions and lot splits in the city of Marquette. And I think it was Susan Bovin, as the assessor, went on to explain to me that she recently had attended a training seminar in Michigan State where she learned, and this is her words, that the current policy for land division in the city of Marquette is illegal, and therefore she put a moratorium on any future splits until they get it straightened out. She told us at that time it was going to be four to eight weeks. We've experienced one delay right after another since our initial conversation. We've experienced delays with our real estate office. We've experienced delays with the surveyor, and this is all delays that have originated in the city assessor's office. And now we've arrived at the point where we finally got...
One minute, sir.
We finally got the city assessor to agree that she had all the information she needed, but now she's changed her mind again. She's informed me that they are expecting to have this problem resolved in late spring at the earliest, and I would hope that this is a surprise of the commissioners as it is to me, because this seems like a bad way to run construction season coming up in the current year. And I would hope that somebody would be surprised enough to sit down and do something about this and see if we could speed this along a little bit. There's eventually a 45-day evaluation period when she accepts your paperwork. She's informed me that there's a seal that wasn't on one of the paperworks that she didn't really need, but because it's not on the paperwork from the surveyor, that the 45-day evaluation period doesn't apply anymore. So she's pretty much resolved herself to sitting on this and doing nothing until we finally get a policy in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
David Alley, proudly, live at 3027 Island Beach Road. I left here about a week ago Saturday, and I just want to fill you on a little trip I took. I took it out to a vacation spot in Bismarck, North Dakota. Kind of an interesting place to go in the dead of winter. Actually, kind of an interesting place to go any time of the year. But when you drive that far, I had a chance to stop and pick up my daughter in the Twin Cities. No, not Ishrami Nagani, but Minneapolis-St. Paul, where I honestly don't understand why, and I can't use the word here, but you'll understand, anybody lives there. I get to Bismarck, I find a very nice town, a little bigger than I like, but a nice town, friendly people, good food, good beer. No, my daughter can't drink me under the table yet. She tried. But you know what? After spending three, four days there and heading back, I was no more excited than when I got to the city of Marquette, to know why I live here, why I enjoy it, why I pay the taxes, why sometimes I get upset when my mailbox gets knocked over, why sometimes I get upset because my street isn't plowed. But you know what? This is a hell of a lot better than any place I drove for almost 3,000 miles. And I have traveled around the United States a lot in the last 13 years of being in business. My blood pressure goes down when I'm heading home. I am not originally from Marquette or originally from the United States, but this is my home. And I thank you all, even though some of you I've had arguments with over the years, I thank you all for doing what you do. And I don't think anybody should ever put this town down. Some of us need to tweak you a little bit now and then to push you in a different direction. The other thing I'd like to say is...
One minute.
One minute, that's all I need. You signed a contract with a gentleman sitting over here, Bill Vida. I've Skyped with him, I've talked to him early hours in the morning, and I poked a little fun at him recently. It was only fun, Bill. You deserve every penny you're getting. You're doing a hell of a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
I know no one's looking at me. Frank Jeffarito, 350 East Ridge, these are my opinions, and I totally agree with the previous speaker about coming back in the Marquette. December 14, 2009, Mr. Ryan interrupted citizen comment to argue my statement that mining is a filthy industry, not just the byproducts of their exploits, but the sleazy manner by which they operate behind the scenes, as we've seen. Mr. DePietro trusted the DEQ, saying they're experts in their field. There's a massive difference between experts in the field and the DEQ siding with the money interests from day one. More recently, the EPA, a less biased body not associated with the politics around here, arrived from Chicago and saw right through that insanity. An outside agency that isn't accustomed to the third-world way of finagling things took an objective look and decided accordingly. The DEQ should be ashamed of itself for embarrassing us over such a destructive political proposal. December 14, 2009, seconds after citizen comment, roughly four in favor versus 10 against the road, Mr. DePietro and Ryan motioned to adopt the resolution. The EPA decision later clarified the carelessness and selfishness of this action. You lost sight of the fact that every city resident is also a resident of the county. But Mr. DePietro had his motion and explanation written in advance of the public opportunity. From now on, you're asked to please correlate what we've learned from the EPA to what we document here, much to the chagrin of the three men to your right. January 31st, Mr. Ryan is quoted saying that the road is not going to happen, and it's very unfortunate. I think we'd all be better off if the EPA was willing to listen to almost every elected official in the state of Michigan who supported County Road 595. The fact is, these elected officials all got to speak first, and in most cases, left, when others waited three hours for less time to speak. At least two out of three citizen comments were against the road, even a higher percentage than against your resolution. Last January, a few of us behind the scenes reminded the EPA of the obvious, that our elected officials aren't representing the sentiments of their constituents. It's also disturbing to learn that our city attorney works for a firm that represents the mine, the same mine whose name on the UP-200 mushers vests ruined last year's race for one enthusiast. Mr. Coyne called this land "the land of extraction," and everybody here, except the Native Americans, are here because of that, and we have to deal with that and perhaps accommodate it better. He's asked to please clarify that quote in his closing comment. Mr. Stonehouse said, "It's only a matter of time before certainly there will be an accident." This is what happens when city officials openly favor a mine, knowing the company applied for a permit based upon the use of existing roads. I'd love to offer suggestions on how to safely route the trucks, but to do so would be to legitimize that awful mine. Please do what it takes to keep those trucks off our roads.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Please state your name and physical address, please.
Good evening, you're Malankin in 8 Market Drive. What a fabulous community we live in. We have people in our community that are donating land to have future parks. And let's say if we were in Washington, DC, that would just get lost in the Quokmire. If we were in Lansing, that would get lost in the Quokmire. And that brings me to the other point, that hopefully it doesn't get lost in the Quokmires. And here in the city of Marquette, I was really flabbergasted to read the article last weekend that the police log Thursday, June, or January 31st, 2013, 8:43 a.m., someone plowing snow at the tourist park who does not work for the City Public Works was cited for that. And golly, that's volunteerism in our community, and we should really look at this heartily, because if somebody can't plow a path to water dogs, what chance do we have as rotarians cleaning up the bogwog and putting wood chips and things like that in our community? I don't think we should get so overly compartmentalized and not let people volunteer. And the audacity of the person complaining, I'm really surprised, at no cost to anybody, to the city, or the taxpayers, in making it good for the community as a whole. I really encourage volunteerism, and we have fabulous volunteerism in our community, and we should, as a city, should not discourage this. We should be able to make this work for everybody's benefit. And I just, I was puzzled when I read that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion, and move to number seven, consent agenda, City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the January 31st, 2013, Special Commission Meeting, and B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $688,202.77.
Thank you, City Clerk. Is there a motion? Commissioner Snyder?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse? Commissioner Snyder?
No comment.
Commissioner Stonehouse? Any other commissioner? Seeing none? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Close. Motion passes seven to zero. Finished business, number eight, Lower Harbor Mooring Field, City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, during the summer of 2008, the process was begun to formalize the usage of a boat mooring field in Marquette's Lower Harbor. Marquette's Lower Harbor is considered a safe harbor by U.S. maritime law, which allows this type of mooring for the short term. But because this area has been historically used as a long-term anchorage, it has become necessary to proceed through the permit process. The city received approved permits from the MDNR and the Army Corps of Engineers to establish a 21-site mooring field by December 31st, 2013. Attempts to privatize this effort have been unsuccessful, resulting in the task of building, managing, and maintaining the field assigned to city staff. In the fall of 2011, the Marquette City Police Dive Team spent two days clearing the bottom of the mooring field area of unnatural objects that had been but were not currently being used as anchors. In the spring of 2012, the dive team marked the new mooring locations on the bottom of the lake for future reference when the field was laid. Regular users were allowed to use this previous anchorage without charge for the 2012 season, with the idea that once the mooring field was completed for the 2013 season, they would be required to abandon their old anchorage and use the new field. It was also understood that a user fee would be addressed at that time. Additionally, the mooring field will be... Additionally, the mooring field will be considered an alternative mooring option to boaters who may be displaced by the 2013 dredging of the Presque Isle Marina. The new field will accommodate five moorings for boats up to 24 feet, which would be type A, 10 moorings for boats up to 30 feet, which would be type B, and six moorings for boats up to and in excess of 30 feet, which would be type C, for a total of 21 moorings. Proposal, the city purchases all equipment and installs per need based on five type A, 10 type B, and six type C moorings. Approximate capital outlay, $26,392. Approximate annual maintenance cost, $1,920. Approximate annual management cost, $380 per year. Cost recovery, the cost recovery is based on assessing an annual fee of $362 to each user, based on 21 users, which would include equipment costs amortized over five years from the date of rental, $252 per year, and an annual maintenance slash administration cost of $110 per year. Fees collected after the five-year amortization would be placed into a specific mooring field fund for equipment, maintenance, and replacement costs. Fiscal effect, a budget adjustment to the Cinder Pond Marina Fund not to exceed $30,000 would be needed for the construction of the field. Cost recovery would be based on annual user fee. Recommendation, authorize the budget adjustment to the Cinder Pond Marina, the creation of a mooring field maintenance fund, and direct the city manager to overhead with the project. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Anybody wishing to address this agenda item?
Frank Jeffarito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette.
Thank you. You have the floor, sir.
But these are my opinions. We're seeing emerge the very eventuality that this board and the public have been warned of for 14 years. Bit by bit, our lake shores become commercialized by the unwanted glitz that this board has encouraged. In time, every square foot is designated and fees are assessed. It happened in many cities that are bigger than this and were once at this point of development. People who have used the mooring field for decades can't afford the $362, and slips at the marinas start at $886 per year now. The only other alternative is to pay a launch fee, if you have a fair-sized boat, anyway. Over time, we're relinquishing our harbor to the rich only. For years, users of the mooring field have not been able to park nearby, and they must commute to their boats by dinghy. You're asked to assure that the lakeshore vegetation adjacent to the mooring field and the dinghy storage beach are not compromised as a consequence of glorifying this mooring field. These mooring fees and talk of more parking meters are examples of how ordinary folks suffer when commercialization takes over. Either pay a painful sum, or you can't use your boat anymore. Then when you do, you're inspected by the Coast Guard without cause. Kind of wrecks your day. Clearing the debris from the mooring field was important, and this fee schedule isn't the worst mishap that we've ever documented, but the increased regimentation along our lakeshore illustrates how even actions that look right can diminish the character of a community. And as this slow, deliberate process progresses, everything that every one of us pays for will become more expensive.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I have a question for staff. This is basically something the DNR has requested that we deal with, I believe? Is that correct? Or DEQ? DNR?
Let me turn this over to our harbor master, although this is typically something that would come under our community services. The project was initiated under our harbor master, and he can provide full background.
The answer to that is yes and no. In 2008, when I became the chief, I had a conversation with the DNR and the legality of the current mooring field. We were having issues with boats not moored properly, boats that were drifting in storms and things of that nature. And I was informed at the time that the current situation, by their standards, was illegal, but they had no method of enforcing those laws or those rules. So the conversation led to the discussion of us, or myself, or the city creating a legitimate mooring field in place of the current one that was already there that would solve both of our problems, theirs being turning it into a legal bottomland conveyance to the city for that purpose, and in my regard, securing a mooring area where the boats would not drift and just be blown around in the wind. So yes, they didn't quite ask, but we kind of came to that conclusion together.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the Lower Harbor moving field, mooring field, as reported by the city manager.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, anything further?
Yes, I would like to thank the harbor master and the dive team for finally getting hold of this longstanding problem and doing something about it and solving it. And I think it'll be safer and better. And also, it comes at a good time when we're dealing with less mooring available at the upper harbor. I personally would like to see citizens of Marquette, since we've put a great deal of physical effort and time administratively to organize this, for citizens of Marquette to have priority to moor there. So that's my feeling.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I know last year, I think there were three different boats that broke loose in the mooring field and potentially caused damaged other boats. One of them, in fact, ended up way down by the prison. Another one on the breakwater. It's a very dangerous situation with the present field, simply because the moorings are inadequate in many cases for the boats that are using them. So this is an effort, I think, to do it safely and to do it well, that protects all of our citizens and all of our users of the waterfront. So it's something that is badly needed, and I'm very happy to see it hopefully come to fruition.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Convency?
One question. This is just based on what I'm hearing in the community is what we have as far as, you know, five moorings for boats up to 24 feet, 10 for boats up to 30 feet, and then it's like six for those greater. Some of them have said there's a lot larger boats that would like to be there or that are currently there, and I guess, I don't know if I can answer that question?
I can. We base the configuration on the depths of the water where the permit allowed us to put our moorings. So the further out, where the bigger boats would have to be, and then we had to take into account swing radiuses. I mean, there's generalizing, but there's a lot I had to learn through this process, and it just isn't the same as easy as driving an anchor in the bottom. So we had to configure it. Originally, we wanted 24 spots or 25 spots. We had to move it, make it smaller, because we were getting into the area of the dredging of the Army Corps of Engineers. So we moved it back to 21, so I'm going on here. But basically, we had to configure to meet the area we had approved.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut off the harbor master. One of the challenges of that site is, on one side, it's still some legacy private control of the bottomlands with the Fraser Boathouse. On the other side, is a DHS-controlled channel for the Coast Guard access. And so some of the challenges that Mike was speaking to, and Commissioner Stonehouse was speaking to, weren't just the boats that clearly aren't acting as they should in that area, but it's to make sure that we're not impacting our neighbors on either side. And so the challenge is then, with the bottom contour, the only way that you can expand out is into the marina. So it's actually, we've previously presented the mooring field diagram. We'll certainly make that available to the commission again, but it's a pretty tight box that we're working with in that area.
And then just one more question, and that is the fee, two more there. Is it, it looks like it's a flat fee, doesn't pertain to what size boat you have, but what was that based on? Just try to get some background.
That was based on the cost of the purchase of the equipment and the fee of the dive team being involved for annual maintenance and installation, as well as the administrative costs that Carl's staff is going to incur for running it from the marina. We plan on using it or utilizing it the same as the marina registrations. They have to go through the marina staff, meet the same criteria as far as insurance and things of that nature, information. And there's a cost with that. It's not a lot, but I put that all into a number that would, if the mooring field is full, would pay off the debt within five years. I did not differentiate between size of boats. I just made it flat rate. That's open to discussion, but I thought it would just be easier this way.
Okay, Commissioner Snyder?
I definitely want to thank staff for getting on this. I think this has been an ongoing issue for a number of years, having friends who are boaters, and I know that it's been something staff has been concerned with. I know that, what, a year ago, we had looked at a public-private partnership to work this out, and I know I voted against that. That said, I still, I would have loved to have seen a public-private partnership. I wish that there was more private entities that would have been willing to step forward and come up with a system there. And to that note, I think one of the reasons that it was turned down is a number of the commissioners were approached by boaters in the community with a lot of concern about how the private entity wanted to manage the mooring field. And we didn't feel that that was the right approach. So one, I'm a little frustrated with, I will say, our citizens as a whole, because the amount of people that came forward to me as a commissioner, I'm assuming to some of the others, about the issues of that mooring field plan and design was pretty overwhelming. It was a large group of people. And now we're sitting here discussing a mooring, and there's nobody, which is really frustrating because, you know, there's no way, as a commissioner, we can know everything. And it's really nice to have that kind of community input, and I wish that I would have that, as well as, I would love to have seen some more plans. I don't believe that I missed them. In what we had last time, there was quite a few pages about how it's laid out. Either way, I know that the staff has been spending a lot of time, and I appreciate that time, and I've got faith in you guys to put something good together. So I'm glad we're on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I just want to compliment the city manager and staff for bringing this forward. I didn't like the earlier proposal, but certainly I do like this proposal. I think I'd like to say you've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Seeing none? I also want to thank the city manager, the Marquette Police Department Dive Team, and Luke Vita, and some of the other people, I don't have their names, that cleaned up that harbor by diving down there. I believe they took around three to four dump truck loads of radiator transmissions, cement blocks, anything else that people could find for anchorage in that area for their sailboats. And the line still broke loose, and their boats drifted away and crashed into the breakwall. So this is going to be, I believe, a good project. So with that, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners, all in favor, say yes.
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 Close. Motion passes seven to zero. With that, we'll go to item number nine, Michigan Department Natural Resources Agreement Addendum, Presque Isle Marina. City clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background. The city commissioner approved the MDNR grant agreement for Phase One of the Presque Isle Marina Plan for dredging the basin. While in the design phase, staff determined the need to include the south pier to the scope of work due to its condition. Staff vetted their concern to the community through the Harbor Advisory Committee last winter. The committee, through a series of special meetings, concurred with staff and recommended proceeding with amending permits and the grant agreement. Staff has been successful with amending permits through the MDEQ and the Corps of Engineers. And recently, the city received an agreement addendum, scope of work change, and resolution from the MDNR, including the south pier demolition. Fiscal effect, Phase One, Presque Isle dredging project funding was appropriated in the FY-2011 '12 capital improvement budget and will be carried forward to the FY-2012/2013 budget. Recommendation, approve the attached MDNR agreement addendum, scope of work change, and resolution for the Presque Isle Marina to include the demolition of the south pier and carry the project forward to the FY-2012/13 budget. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will motion to approve the attached Michigan Department of Natural Resources Agreement Addendum, scope of work change and resolution to the Presque Isle Marina to include demolition of south pier and carry project forward to FY-12/13 budget.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Ryan?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, nothing really to add, in fact. We've been wrestling with this one for several years, and I think it's time that we finally move forward with it. Certainly, we are fighting a systemic wide problem of low water level across the entire Great Lakes. Lake Michigan down 29 inches. I think Lake Superior is sitting, approaching an all-time low of 1926. So certainly, we need to do something to provide the water that's necessary to make this marina function.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing really I can add to that.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Seeing none? All ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Close. Motion passes seven to zero. We'll move to agenda number 10, consider-
Excuse me, Your Honor. Staff is saying we need a roll call on that particular-
We do? We don't have a resolution if it's unanimous.
It's okay.
Okay, we'll go to agenda number 10, consider approving a technical assistance grant to conduct climate change adaptation planning in partnership with Superior Watershed Partnership Land Trust. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. Background. The city of Marquette and the SWP were recently awarded planning technical assistance for climate change adaptation planning. Through a competitive process by, through a competitive process by the Great Lakes Integrated Science Assessment Center, or GLISA, G-L-I-S-A, it is a part of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. The city of Marquette submitted an application for assistance separately from the SWP, but the assistance was offered as a partnership between the two entities, and assistance will be provided by GLISA and Michigan State University Extension, MSUE, researchers. Assistance will include consultation with MSUE and climate scientists, locally relevant weather and climate data to help plan for the future, informational maps, GIS designed for the local area and region, educational workshops, a process to set community goals to adapt to changes in the climate, and a final report summarizing process and recommendations. Findings from this project will be incorporated into the community master plan as directed by the Planning Commission. Fiscal effect, the city will receive planning assistance from MSUE at no cost. Recommendation, adopt a resolution to approve the GLISA Planning Technical Assistance Grant for Climate Change Adaptation Planning. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Cohen?
I move we adopt a resolution to approve the GLISA Plan Planning Technical Assistance Grant for Climate Change Adaptation Planning.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Is there a second? Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Klein?
Nothing.
Commissioner Neamy?
I just have one question. What is the amount of the grant going to be?
I believe we estimate it to be about $6,000 worth of technical assistance. There's no dollar amount tag to it. It's just purely technical assistance from these folks coming to our community, holding workshops with us, and then doing some writing.
That'll be the total value of the effort? $6,000?
Thank you. Any other commissioner wishing to address this? Seeing none? All ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Close. Motion passes seven to zero. We'll go to agenda number 11, Coastal Zone Management Grant, Lakeshore Boulevard, Phase Two. Two. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the city of Marquette submitted a coastal zone management grant application to the M D E Q for Phase Two of the Lake Shore, excuse me, Lake Shore Boulevard redesign and Lake Superior shoreline restoration project. The city was successful in their pursuit and will receive $34,500 for hosting public engagement sessions and incorporating public input to develop a preliminary design for restoring a 3,000-foot section of Lake Superior shoreline that is currently heavily armored with rock riprap. Included in this project is the development and engineering plan to address erosion, the relocation of Lake Shore Boulevard, as well as two low-cost dune restoration demonstration areas. The S W P is a project partner and will assist with implementation of the grant-funded project, which will conclude on March of 2014. Fiscal effect, the total grant is $69,000 with $34,500 of city match in the form of in-kind contributions. Recommendation, accept the terms of the grant agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Anybody wishing to address this agenda item?
Thank you, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Surely, we've needed a preliminary design for quite a while. In fact, a conceptual drawing of a renewed cliffside site appeared roughly a decade ago after the idea of a 26-unit office park fell on its nose. I've always favored the idea of moving Lake Shore Boulevard three-quarters of the way to the west boundary, with a large parkway to the east facing the lake. The dune restoration is an excellent idea, as is running the North Country Trail east of the Boulevard along the scenic stretch. One concern from way back was how much higher the site, or at least the Boulevard, would ideally need to be raised, and where we'd get this enormous amount of fill from, and at what cost. Think of how nice that stretch of beach will look if reclaimed similarly to what we see along McCarty's Cove today. I hope to live to see the day, preferably with the power plant out of the view. By all means, apply for the largest grant we can receive, because we're going to need it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we accept the terms of the grant agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the grant.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, you know, this is a planning grant. This is, you know, for us to do some planning and possibly some engineering on this project. It will provide an opportunity for public to have input on how this will look, if in fact, at some point, we can go forward with it, and I think this is a logical next step in this process.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, it's one more step in a very long hike, but this one has got to get done, and certainly will benefit everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Neamy?
I think this is a good project, but I've got a couple of questions. The $34,500 in actual money that's going to come to us, is that going to be just used to set up some planning meetings, or what is that going to be used for?
It's going to be money that can be used to actually work on the two dune restoration sites. A portion of that money will go to Superior Watershed Partnership for that construction of those sites, and then it also, the money will be used to facilitate some of the further meetings. We've already, in Phase One of the project, have a coastal engineering firm working for us. This will be able to continue that relationship into the, what we're calling more or less the design phase of the project, further defining it in engineering terms.
Any other commissioner willing to ask questions on this agenda? We haven't seen none. Motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes seven to zero. We'll now go to agenda number 12, and that's an addition by Commissioner Snyder and seconded by Commissioner Coyne. So, Commissioner Snyder, you have the floor on this?
Sure, thank you. We can keep this fairly brief, although, you know, I was really expecting that we wouldn't be able to get to this until 10 o'clock at least. I'm bringing, I wanted to bring up the idea of pedestrian safety in our community for a basic discussion, only because I've heard about it so much from residents, and I don't know if the rest of you have. I know that we've had a few residents over the last two years come into us and say, you know, "I'm kind of concerned about pedestrian safety," a few of them specifically with crosswalks. Had the chance, we, at that time, we asked the chief of police. I've had the chance to talk to him a little bit more, as well as look at the Uniform Traffic Code, which we're currently following. And I guess I'm kind of curious, from my fellow commissioners, what your thoughts are on pedestrian safety. Is it an issue to you? It's something that we talked about in our parking plan, about trying to make it easier for people to cross, and currently, the way we're operating as a city is residents don't have the right-of-way to cross a crosswalk anywhere in the city. If they're in the street, a car is required to stop, but if they're standing on the side, they could be standing there for 20 minutes waiting for somebody to stop. My own personal interest is that we either interpret the Uniform Traffic Code in a way that I think it can be read, that if somebody's waiting there, residents would have to stop. But if, right now, the way it's being understood is that you don't have to stop at all, and pedestrians don't have the right-of-way. I'm specifically not asking for any actions or any motions. I'm just asking for commissioner opinion and discussion, only because I've had so many residents bring it up. I feel that it's worth bringing it up in a public format so that they can hear our discussion on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Coyne?
I would, I've been listening to people talk about this, and I think what we really need is an opinion from our city attorney interpreting the law, and also an opinion from the chief of police after that interpretation is given, so then we can make some sound judgments rather than just one person's opinion, or my opinion, or Jason's opinion, or whatever. So we know what the law is and what's reasonable to do and what we can do. I think that begs the issue first. I mean, we really need to deal with that.
You want it now?
No.
Now? I can give it to you now. The law is pretty clear in this area.
I was thinking you'd have to go and deliberate that, but now is great. Thank you.
No, Michigan has indeed, and Marquette has adopted the Michigan Uniform Traffic Code, which is adopted throughout the state. Everyone, you go from municipality to municipality, you know what the laws are for traffic. But the particular provision that Commissioner Snyder is referring to is a rule talking about right-of-way in crosswalks, and the rule is very simpler, is very simple. If a pedestrian is in the crosswalk as a vehicle is approaching, that vehicle has to give the right-of-way either by slowing down or stopping. That's when the pedestrian's already in the crosswalk. But if a pedestrian is on the curb, then he has to wait until the traffic stops. Now, we're talking about a place where, a crosswalk where traffic control signals are not in place, so they're not working, because if there are controls in place, then you know when to stop and go. But, you know, couldn't be clearer. I know some municipalities, a couple around the state at least, one, has amended their rules to allow for pedestrians to cross, really, and require cars to stop, and allows them to cross without waiting for the cars to pass. Ann Arbor is an example of that, but I don't know of any up here, and maybe the chief does, that have that, have that policy or that ordinance.
No, I don't know of any place that has that ordinance as well, and I agree with his interpretation. And Dave was just doodling on my piece of paper here. He said N M U, and that's a point. N M U does not have a pedestrian right-of-way rule either, even though a lot of people think they do. They follow the same, the same rule we do. I don't know if I need to, if you need any more information than that, but that's the interpretation.
Commissioner Snyder?
Well, in that case, I understand that that is the state law, and so obviously amendments can be made, and we have, we have heard citizens, I guess, request our attention on that. And again, I don't necessarily want action, but I am curious to hear commissioner comments as far as priorities, and is that something that, as commissioners, you're concerned with? That we spend some time trying to identify a right way forward to address those citizen concerns or not?
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, number one, nobody's against pedestrian safety. You know, number two, I do object, you know, to discussing these items with no advance information, no advance planning, no opportunity to think about it, and here we are at the end of a long meeting, and we're supposed to have a discussion about what we think about pedestrian safety. You know, there are a lot of issues here. You know, if it were as simple as saying we're just going to make people stop at every crosswalk or traffic stop, but there obviously are other issues involved here, like traffic and education. You know, if people, if drivers aren't familiar with the fact, for example, that Marquette changes its, changes the rules, and, you know, we could be creating very hazardous situations. So, I think, you know, I'm all in favor of pedestrian safety. I'd like to see us do what we can, but, you know, I think we have to get more information as to what, what the ramifications are, what the possibilities are. You know, if we're talking about every crosswalk in the city of Marquette, I don't know.
Commissioner Snyder?
I guess that's why I bring it up here, is if it is something we're interested in, it's obviously something we need to gain more information on rather than make any decisions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Combedancy?
I do think there has been a lot more pedestrian car accidents recently, whether it's directly in the city or certainly right around our city. I think there are things that we can do. I mean, one thing that was mentioned was Front Street and just how cars, there's nothing deterring cars from driving 35 right into the downtown. I think, I think it's going to be a, I don't want to say a long process, but I do think there are things that we are going to look at that are going to help this, and, you know, the downtown area is one area. I would like to see it happen, but similar to what Don said, I'm not sure we could do something in the entire city, but it's a start.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I guess we, as Commissioner Ryan said, we all agree that pedestrian safety is a laudable goal, and that's what we ought to all strive toward, but I too would be concerned that, you know, Michigan does not have the tradition of pedestrian right-of-way like California and some other states do, and for us to do something unilaterally is going to put people at risk, but I guess the, probably the thing to, place to address this would be on the state level to have Michigan discuss whether they want to provide, you know, enhance pedestrian safety for its pedestrians. And so then, all, most people who come to Marquette then would be familiar with the laws of the greater state rather than the specific laws of one municipality.
Any other commissioner?
Just to follow up, you know, truly, I, I'm not putting it down. I think, I think pursuing it is a good idea, and I'm not sure that what the best way to do that is. I'm not even sure sitting at this table is the best way to do it. You know, it might be if you have a task force or some group look at it, or some, people come in with some specific kind of recommendations. The point that Sarah made, which came out of the parking study, is the traffic on Front Street, for example. You know, there is a case where perhaps something could be done to make that a friendlier street. So, you know, there are so many possibilities all over town that, you know, it would take some real thought and some real effort on the part of someone or some group, you know, to put some ideas on the table to react to. That's basically what I'm saying.
Any other commissioner? Well, I'll put the final twist on this. A year after Ann Arbor had enacted their pedestrian has-a-right-of-way, now they're looking at deleting it from their traffic. Due to the fact that when pedestrians were starting to walk across, people, or motorists that didn't stop got $100 fine for not ealing to the pedestrian. Well, after so many drivers had gotten $100 tickets, whenever they seen a pedestrian standing outside the curb near a crosswalk, they hit their brakes, they got rear-ended, two people got hurt. Now, the pedestrian was safe, but the motorists were injured because the motorists that hit the brakes, the car behind them didn't realize he was going to stop that quick. So, it's just a little bit of a tip of a can of worms if you just want to get into that. So, this is what's happening in Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor, Michigan, that is. But anyways, you, if anybody wants to ask them what their feelings are with pedestrians' right-of-way, I'm sure they'll give you a very good, thorough thought and concerns of what they wish they wouldn't have done a year ago. And anything else, Commissioner Snyder, on this?
I'm just going to state it now rather than state it in the commissioner comment section, is that I do appreciate the conversation. I really believe that part of our role as commissioners is to take all of the random, not all of, many of the random topics that come up to us publicly, personally, and be able to discuss them in a public format. I know it's difficult, particularly because it's not something that we can act on, it's not something that we can make a decision on. You know, oftentimes, it's things that might take a year or two to actually work out and put the details together, but I think having that, that public discussion on behalf of the citizens that are out there that have requested it is a really important part of our job, and by discussing it, it gives staff an idea of just kind of what we're thinking on things that aren't maybe on their radar yet, but what should maybe be on the radar in the future. So I appreciate the conversation from my fellow commissioners.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other commissioner wishing to address this issue? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of agenda number 12. Open it to public comment. Should be limited to three minutes per person. Please address, state your name and fiscal address. Anybody wishing to address commission at this time?
Thank you, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Please put pedestrian safety on a future agenda so we can prepare, please. Two commissioners missed our January 28th meeting. Five of you excused them with no explanation, except when the matter is highly personal. We deserve to know, you know, if it's a vacation, an illness, or such. You make the process of excusing everyone so automatic. You're certainly entitled to miss a meeting, however, through your elections, you've made the commitment to us to be here. Another issue is the media tripods occasionally too near the southwest doorway of this chamber. The fire chief is also aware of this. Tripods are a trip hazard in addition to blocking safe exit in the event of an emergency. Before the chamber renovation, the audience faced perpendicular to now with the two exits equidistant behind the audience. The current setup isn't as safe if the room is crowded and needs to be evacuated. Speaking of crowds, January 28th, the planning chair mentioned how few people show up for his planning sessions, except when they're directly affected. Of course, the same is true of your meetings. I saw with my own eyes the public enthusiasm evaporate from mid-1998 to around 2000. Public forums on major parcels used to draw full houses. One of you once said that people don't care unless the meeting is televised. This occurs because our commissions have historically not delivered what most of us desired, at least back then. We found our participation a waste of time, except when there's either an audience or if the comments are captured on the public record. You've exercised sound reasoning on the senior center and also on the playground, functioning the way a commission is supposed to. With our population aging almost simultaneously, the size matter is worth looking closer at. The site plan looked too basic and uninteresting. The same person who raised this issue was the only member who's openly agreed with me on the commons ice rink limitations. No one, though, has ever addressed the long-term goal to extend the commons rink onto the DeFonte property. Let us eventually relocate the DeFonte operations to the orphanage site to provide a continuous corridor from the commons lot heading south across Courtyard Square to Barriga Street. We could then expand the rink, even create the skating pond that first appeared on the conceptual drawing before the skating portion was compromised. Many times, the people would use the rink Many times, the people would use the rink if it were of adequate size. Even the suburb of only 9,000 people where I grew up provided a much nicer rink, many times as big, 50 years ago. A quote from Frederick Olmsted strikes too close to home. "I see what ought to be done, but I can't get other men to see it." Olmsted is a famous visionary whose vision was proven locally with Presque Isle Park, and you still won't extrapolate this philosophy to other parcels, even when the benefits are laid out for you in the most timely and specific detail.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Start with Commissioner Stonehouse. Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I'd just like to say that we had some good discussion tonight around the Presque Isle Park playground, and I know for a volunteer committee like the Presque Isle Park Group, it's probably a little discouraging to come to a meeting like this and then kind of have things fall apart in the way they did, but I really hope they won't be discouraged, because I think it's, you know, we have to take a broader view of it. Some issues were raised tonight. I think there's enthusiasm for the park. Certainly, I'm grateful for the amount of time that's put into this by the members of that committee, but I think these issues have to be dealt with, so I just hope they're not discouraged, and I hope we can ultimately come up with a plan, or they come up with a plan, that we can all agree will be good, because I think it will enhance that area. And I don't think we can pass without, you know, I guess we don't have enough detail on the generous offer made by the Clark Lambros family, but certainly that is something that's, that we will want to find out more about. He's from a generation when people did things like this, you know, and he was a unique member of our community and contributed in many ways, and hopefully, this is something that we can see through to fruition, and it will work out for the city of Marquette in what I'm sure is the generous sense in which it was offered.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
Thank you, your honor. I would like to echo Commissioner Ryan's comments, thanking Michelle and the Lambros family for their proposal. Also, you know, the Presque Isle Advisory Committee came and advised us, and we, I don't think they should be angry with this. We took their advice and made some suggestions to go back and make it an even better plan, so I would hope, and I think they will do that. I also would hope that the city manager does look into the difficulties that the church in Shires Hills was having and look into those facts, so that can, and you're very good at that, so appreciate that. And I would like to raise a point of order. Citizens wishing to comment on agenda items should, at the time of public comment, reserve time. That was not done, and to violate that, I think is inappropriate for the citizen to come to the mayor and say, "I want to do this, and I want to do that." That's the way we run it, and that's the way it should be done. And in the future, I have no idea then who wishes to speak on or address certain agenda items, and I think that's a right that we need to have and should not be allowed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Kembencie?
I have a few comments, and one, I just appreciate Commissioner Snyder bringing the public safety topic to our agenda tonight. I do think it's something that we shouldn't lose sight of. I think it's complex, and I'm not sure the best way to look at it either, but I do appreciate you bringing it up for our discussion. Again, I think the land division issue is a big one. I wasn't aware that this was still unresolved, and I do think it's important that if we could get a small report on this sometime soon from the city manager. I also want to thank Yorma for bringing up the volunteerism. I walk my golden retriever at the dog park just about every other day, and thought that our Public Works was doing a wonderful job at keeping it plowed, and I did read that in the paper, the comment. And I think maybe we can just define better what volunteers can and can't do, and how they can help and how they can't, because certainly we don't want to put a bad taste in people's mouths who do want to help. I'm not sure Coyne is okay, just for our labor unions and that, but certainly, maybe it brings a bigger topic of volunteerism. What does that look like to the city? We've got a beautiful pavilion, Presque Isle, that was done mostly with volunteers, and so maybe we just need a better definition and some more acceptance on how we view community members. With that said, I would like to thank the Presque Isle Park Committee, who did put a lot of time into their plan, and agreeing with my other commissioners, we are excited, and it is our job to kind of critique it and put our own thoughts and concerns to it. We're looking forward to the plan coming back, and I think it's similar to the Tours Park Plan that Commissioner Coyne and Commissioner Neme and I attended at the Citizens Forum last month, in that we're trying to satisfy the needs of many citizens and groups, but also that Presque Isle Park comes with a rich history, and that is something that Mr. Verito brought up. Mr. Frederick Olmsted, who also created Central Park, mapped out and came up with a maintenance plan for our Presque Isle Park. And when he came to Marquette, it was only the management plan he was asked to put into place, but it's kind of an environmental spin, and it's always been our crown jewel, and I just think that it deserves a little more deliberation and planning, so I look forward to that. And lastly, I would like to thank Michelle Butler for coming forward. I read a wonderful article in the New York Times. I don't know if any of my fellow commissioners saw it on Clark Lambros. Certainly a very generous donation that came forward tonight from their family. I look forward to the details, too, and would just like to thank her again for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Kembencie. Commissioner Snyder?
Sure. I would also like to send out a thanks to Michelle for coming forward on behalf of the Clark Lambros family. That's an incredible offer, and that's part of what makes our city amazing. I also want to thank Dave Alley for stepping forward and recognizing that, as well as many other of the things that make our community really great. You know, many of us have traveled. I've lived four different continents, and, you know, this is it. This is the best place I've ever found, which is why I'm sitting up here and willing to represent. I feel, I believe that many commissioners and residents feel the same way, and it's really nice to hear somebody come in and bring that up. I also have concerns regarding our lot split policy and how that affects residents who are trying to figure out what to do with their property. Other than that, I appreciate the conversation. Now that we're going on three hours, thank you, guys, and see you in a few weeks. Well, tomorrow morning. Never mind, tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Neme?
I don't have anything specific, your honor, but I'd lend my weight to some of the comments of prior city commissioners, and I think our manager's probably taking notes on that. Your honor, just before you start your comments, so it's three minutes to 10, and the meeting shall conclude by 10, unless it's extended by the commission. So if we have a consensus to do that, that's fine, but that's, those are your rules. Those are your rules. They shall conclude.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? He said I got 12 minutes. Thank you. Anyways, this is the UP 200 is looking for volunteers on Friday, February 15. There's a need for crowd control in the downtown market area. Time for volunteers to meet is scheduled for 5:15 PM in the downtown area. I imagine it's by the Mining Journal. Please contact Anna Sanford at the following cell phone number, 869-4827, to volunteer for this Friday event. Also, on Sunday, February 17, there is a need for traffic control personnel on M28 East from Cambogon Road to the Welcome Center on US 41 South. This will be a two-to-three-hour shift for the volunteers, and then to go and warm up. I believe there would be patrol officers in this area that volunteers would be working with for safety and traffic control. Again, volunteers may call Anna Sanford at her cell phone number, 869-4827. Also, I'd like to echo on the Clark Lambros family and Michelle Butler on looking at donating that 22 acres of land, the lakefront, and then on the west side of the road, so hopefully we get together with these people and be able to work out issues. And then with the city manager, next community office hours, dates and locations, please.
Thank you, your honor. Next community office hours will be this Wednesday, February 13, from 10 to 12, at the public conference room in Peter White Public Library, and I look forward to seeing everybody come down and share all their great thoughts about Marquette.
Thank you, city manager, his staff, and thank you, fellow commissioners. We are now adjourned.